The hell is this? Is that yours or mine?
My's.
Oh, what? Shit, I'm gonna put it over here in the outbasket. I ain't looking at that walk on stuff like. If I could have your attention please, if you will and enable, would you please stand for the invocation and if you would, remain standing for the place of the flag. Dear Lord, we meet this evening to serve our community and use all of our resources wisely and well. To represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibilities to the past and to the future, and the rights and the needs of both individuals and community. And being trusted servants, we seek blessings of our deliberation on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and act well. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm showing 6:30 PM, Tuesday, October 21st, 2014. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, and I would like for the Board to consider accepting the agenda as amended. The amended would be, item one, would be to remove item number nine. Bill Tony made a request to appear before the Board to discuss the condition of the county, the asset that be removed. Replace 15, 17, well, replace Exhibit 17 under number 17. Financing, we had some pen and ink changes on the resolution minute, so that's gonna be a change. Number 21, the, okay, that's no longer in here because we're no longer gonna hear the condemnation. Is that correct, Council?
That's correct.
Okay. Under 16A, we're gonna remove 16A. 16A is a resolution to award a bid materials and field testing services. We're removing that. We're moving on to, let's go to 19. Let's go to planning zoning, number B. Public care for the purpose of receiving comments and adoption of resolutions to amend the Henry County Cities Joint Comprehensive Plan. That's been postponed by staff. Sir? Yeah, I was gonna read C. And also, C, public care for the purpose of receiving comments at the adoption of Section 4.02-03 Hudson Bridge Jonesboro Road Connect Overlay. That's been postponed for staff as well. Having said that, does somebody move, we adopt the agenda as published.
Some move.
With the amendments. We have a motion, District Four. We have a second from District Two. He spoke first. Any further discussions, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. As you can well tell, we missed the last meeting because it was fall break for schools and had a lot of people out of school, so we postponed the last meeting, so needless to say, we've been overloaded tonight, so if you look at the schedule, but we're gonna get through this. So, having said that, first item is, we have a regular county clerk is out on extended sick leave, so we have, we need to appoint Susan Craig as our interim clerk. So if you look at Exhibit One, there's a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners appointing an interim county clerk to the Board. Susan Craig is a newcomer. She, her employee number is number 13. She's retired, and she was a clerk for many, many, many years and served many functions for Henry County, and she was blessed, so we asked her if she would be amenable to fill it in for our clerk in her absence, and she graciously approved, and we're fortunate to have Susan Craig back with us. And so, if somebody would move to approve the resolution as published.
Some move.
Have a motion District One?
Second.
Second District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Next, we're gonna have a presentation by Extension Service and Communication Department concerning National Extension Award for Cooking and Gardening Show Garden Delights. That's what we took the picture for earlier, is that correct? Thank you so much.
That's correct. Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight we have a special recognition of the Henry County UGA Extension Office and the Henry County Communications Department for their collaboration on an award-winning cooking show. Together, the two departments produced the show Garden Delights, a cooking and gardening show hosted by Extension Services Director Susan Howington and Agricultural and Natural Resource Agent Frank Hancock, and taped and edited and produced by broadcast specialist Edward Gore and broadcast producer Kevin Williams, who took the picture earlier and who are in the control room right now. The show combines local gardening tips with simple delicious recipes and a little humor as well, thanks to Mr. Hancock. Tonight, we're recognizing the show, its hosts and its producers, because Garden Delights was the recipient of this year's National Extension Association of Family and Consumer Sciences Communications Award for Television and Video. This informative and entertaining program first won at the state level, then the regional level, and then came out on top at the national level. So we thought it fitting to recognize the outstanding efforts of Susan Howington, Frank Hancock, Edward Gore, and Kevin Williams for their professionalism, creativity, and service to the citizens of Henry County. A little plug here, Garden Delights airs on Henry Television, Channel 180 on Charter Cable, and Channel 99 on AT&amp;T U-verse several times a week, and is available on demand on the county website. And earlier, we took a photo, and I know Susan had a couple of words she wanted to say.
I just wanna say thank y'all for allowing them to take time to come and tape this. It's been an awesome experience for us to learn what TV's all about, but also the experience of learning from each other, and also the people behind that wall that have helped us make really, look us, make us look really good as far as the TV show. It is very educational. If you hadn't had a chance to watch it, please do so. It's great information on healthy eating and then also on that garden part of it, too. So we, we hope that you'll watch it and hope you'll enjoy just as much as we enjoy doing it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we had a Fire Safety Month. Is this a proclamation?
Do it, uh, students first?
I'm sorry. The Arts Initiative Student Recognition, sorry about that. Yes, sir?
I have one.
And I'll be reading this one. Normally, I memorize them. I got this.
Do you wanna go to the podium and read it? Do you wanna read it from your seat?
I tell you what, I don't get to go to the podium.
Yes, sir, I'll go to the podium.
I just go to the podium.
Yes.
Tonight, the Henry County Board of Commissioners is recognizing Henry County Schools and local art students for taking part in Henry County Arts Initiative, which is a partnership between Henry County Schools and Henry County Government, allowing for students' beautiful artwork to brighten the walls of the county administration building. For the past three years, art teachers from around the school district have submitted students' artwork to be displayed. Coordinated by Joanie Bowen, art teacher for Henry County Schools, selected art has been on loan to Henry County Government to be matted and framed in a professional manner and displayed for the employees and the public to enjoy. I can't say enough about how the students' artwork brightens the walls of this building and makes such an incredible impact. We are truly honored that the students, their families, their teachers, share this art with us, and we are in awe of the students' talents. Some of these students are here with us tonight, and we will now recognize them with certificates for their achievements, and I strongly encourage others that are here tonight, that may be here for something other than this, that they would take the time to go around the hallways on the outside and just take a look at this artwork. It will astound you how gifted some of our people are. Thank you.
Chairman, Commissioners, now I'm gonna read the names. We're gonna do three groups, elementary students, middle school students, and high school students. So, students, when I call your name, if you come up and get your certificate, and then stand over there, and you'll get a picture as a group with the Commissioners. In elementary school, we have Maya Akra from Hampton Elementary School, Casey Kane, Luella Elementary School, Kaylee Chosewood, Pates Creek Elementary School, Gabriella Gibson, Wesley Lakes Elementary School, Laura Kate Gleaton, Timber Ridge Elementary School, Avion Highland, Luella Elementary School, Ezra Hildebrand, Cotton Indian Elementary School, Marshall Jones, Oakland Elementary School, Ryan Jones, Walnut Creek Elementary School, Sierra Jones, Locust Grove Elementary School, Rachel Little, Pates Creek Elementary School, Allison Martinez, Rocky Creek Elementary School, Aiden McPhillips, Locust Grove Elementary School, Chloe Movissen, New Hope Elementary School, Isabella Morris, East Lake Elementary School, Nicole Mulkey, East Lake Elementary School, Hannah Najun, Red Oak Elementary School, Sam Tchukwu, Oniyugu, I don't know if I got that right, apologize, Stockbridge Elementary School, Josie Orewhela, Rocky Creek Elementary School, Skylar Patton, Timber Ridge Elementary School, Lexi Shaw, Flippin Elementary School, Cameron Southard, East Lake Elementary School, Olivia Summy, New Hope Elementary School, Gabrielle Waterhouse, Homeschooled, and Casey Weaver, Locust Grove Elementary School. Okay, if you just stay there for a picture. Scooch in, scooch in. If we give it a round of applause. I will now read the middle school students. Okay, for middle school, we have Tiana Andrews, Luella Middle School, Jordan Barrow, Luella Middle School, Tito Butrago, Union Grove Middle School, Karen Jewel Mies, Hampton Middle School, Enrique Ruiz, Ola Middle School, and Brittany Whitmer, Ola Middle School. And Brittany was here earlier. Congratulations. And last but not least, high schoolers, and I hope there's some high schoolers here. We have Amber Cameron, Ola High School, Jordan Greenwood, Ola High School, Eugene Pelisir, Stockbridge High School, Allison Rotman, Union Grove High School, Eric Suarez, Stockbridge High School, Marissa Turner, Ola High School, and Anastasia Winfield, Union Grove High School. Very good. Thank you.
Next, we recognize the Fire Safety Month.
Commissioners, tonight we have a proclamation recognizing Fire Prevention Month in Henry County. Whereas the Henry County Fire Department is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our county, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes and locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2013, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to more than 369,500 home fires, and whereas three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms, and working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas Henry County residents urge to install smoke alarms as well as alert devices that meet the needs of people who are deaf or hard of hearing, and make sure that those alarms are operable with fresh batteries, and whereas Henry County residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas Henry County first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, enabling Henry County residents to be responsive to public education measures and to take the necessary steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2014 fire prevention theme, Working Smoke Alarms Save Lives, test yours every month, effectively serves to remind us that we need working smoke alarms to give us time to get out safely. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the month of October 2014 shall be known as Fire Prevention Month throughout this county, during which time all citizens are urged to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Month, particularly by checking and testing their smoke alarms at least every month and supporting the many public safety efforts of Henry County's Fire Department. This 21st day of October 2014, signed by Tommy Ann Smith, Chairman, attested by Susan B. Craig, interim county clerk.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve this community. We have some people here tonight who do this work on a daily basis, and I'd like for you to recognize them and ask them if they will stand and come up front, please.
Good job, guys. Appreciate your work, gentlemen.
Commissioners, we have one more proclamation this evening, and it's a recognition of Retired Educators Day. Whereas the Governor of the State of Georgia has proclaimed the day of Sunday, November 2nd, 2014, as Retired Educators Day in Georgia, and whereas there are more than 105,000 retired educators in Georgia who have devoted their time, energies, and talents to public education, providing academic development to millions of outstanding Georgia citizens, and whereas retired educators have touched and influenced the lives of generations of young people, motivating and inspiring their students to use their innate talents and abilities to the fullest and to become responsible contributing citizens, and whereas retired educators possess valuable knowledge and use their lifetime of experience to enrich the educational process in a variety of settings, and they continue to be a major source of insight and direction in education for our state and nation. And whereas for 57 years, the Georgia Retired Educators Association has dedicated its efforts to improving the welfare of retired educators and providing opportunities for them to become involved in community activities where many serve in religious, civic, and political organizations. And whereas citizens of Henry County and the State of Georgia are grateful for the work done by retired educators around the state and nation, and we commend them for their time and commitment to the betterment of our county and our country. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the day of November 2nd, 2014, be recognized as Retired Educators Day in Henry County, during which time we encourage all citizens to honor those who have dedicated their lives to the education of our youth and recognize the contributions those retired educators continue to make in the community. This 21st day of October 2014, signed by Chairman Tommy Ann Smith, attested by interim county clerk Susan B. Craig. Do we have any?
Before we move to the next item, I'm gonna announce, we've had three people that'd like to speak for five minutes. I've noticed one is water authority, one is zoning, and one is communication. But anyway, the one about rezoning, Ms. Finley, that will be a public care in and on by itself, so we will have 15 minutes for somebody to speak when that comes, so I'm gonna let you just speak when we get to that rezoning issue. Now, having said that, we yield the floor to the presentation of a historical book for Henry County, Dr. Mike Moon. Will that speaker work for you?
Second here.
Will that speaker work for you? Okay.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Dr. Mike Moon, and to give you a little background on this, as you know, Mrs. Vessi Thrasher Reiner did the Mother of Counties book, and she wrote it back in 1970 and 71, and she presented it to the county, did not cost the county a penny. Just like this is not gonna cost the county a penny. It's something that's a labor of love for the county, and I helped her as a teenager at that time, was sorting papers for that book. And the book, like she said, it was not all in there. All the history wasn't. There's no way you can put all the history in a book. You have to live some of it. Her book was over 300 pages long. This one's over 200 pages. Hers was 150 years' worth of material. Mine's 43 years' worth of material. It picks up from where she left off in 71 to today. And she always told me, she says, "Mike, one day, you're gonna have, somebody's gonna have to add to it." And that's what this is. And this is the only copy that's gonna be around. I have the master copy myself, but this is gonna be the only copy, right here. And it is, like I say, it's 203 pages long, and I would like to present it to y'all for the people of Henry County, 'cause the citizens, this is for all, everybody. It's not just for any one person, it's for the whole county, the 213, 14,000 people that live here. This is for y'all. And I think this is, like I say, it's been a labor of love. It's something that I wanted to get done, 'cause, you know, the 200th anniversary of Henry County is coming up in just a few short years. It's something we need to start planning on today, 'cause it costs more now to have a little get-together like they had in 1971, and getting cost as much then. But now, it's gonna cost a little more, but we can get it together. I just hope I'm here for it. That's the main thing. That's why I went ahead and wrote the book, got it together, 'cause of my health. I just hope I'm here for the 200th anniversary. I'm gonna try to be, Lord willing. So, but anyway, I'd like to present this to y'all.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Moon. Next, we have public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wish to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must sign your name, address, and specific topic you wish to speak about, or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. This is a five-minute time. It's open for the citizens. The clock will start. Come up, state your name and address. If the board answers any questions or anything, that will be a dialogue and the clock comes off. So, having said that, the first one would be, Mr. Hope Thomas wants to talk about Henry County Water Authority.
Well, in essence, it's not the water authority, it's just water in general. Thank you, gentlemen, for letting me speak. This is the second time I've addressed the board on this similar issue. I'm from 3360 Old Snapping Shoals Road. That's about as far north from where we're standing as you can get still be in Henry County, a little place called Snapping Shoals on the infamous South River. To give you a little bit of history, in 2004, I addressed the Henry County Board of Commissioners as required by the Georgia EPD, as well as the Henry County Water and Sew Authority. When we filed, my brother and I, When we filed, my brother and I, which is Thomas Brothers, we filed an application to withdraw water from the South River at Snapping Shoals. That is, for drinking water, to filter, for potable water. We were asking Henry County to join us in the endeavor financed by General Electric using state-of-the-art filtration equipment. We also asked Newton County and four other counties to join us. We were turned down by Henry and Newton, who both were planting reservoirs. Snapping Shoals only needed a pipeline, and you can't build houses, as everybody told me, on a pipeline. The autonomous entity that makes those decisions for you, gentlemen, and the county, is the Henry County Water and Sew Authority. Their attorney said Henry County could never use the South River due to pollution, and they had an expensive environmental study backing that up. Flash forward into year 2007, after the approximately $60 million Tuscaloosa Creek Reservoir was built, and the Henry County Water Authority attorney decided to approach our neighbor across the river from us in Henry County. They had obviously done a title search and discovered, they being the Smith, Welch, and Britton, discovered that in 1977, when we, Thomas Brothers, purchased an additional piece of property at Snapping Shoals, that an attorney had recorded our plat, but not IDed. The race to the courthouse ensued. By using the neighbor, they contacted Smith, Welch, and Britton, the heirs of, or the people we both had purchased our property from, and got 13 heirs to sign a quitclaim to correct a suspected clerical error made in 1991 in our neighbor's property that he purchased over in Henry County, just across the river from our business in Newton County, however, I live in Henry County. The heirs being nice people obliged. We had bought our Henry County piece of property in 1976, which included our water rights, and in 1977, which included the dam and the mill race and so forth. We operated our business for 34 years until my late brother discovered surveyors on our property in April of 2008 and told them to get off. We've been in shock ever since, as this has cost, has gone through the courts and has cost us our lifetime of savings. The taxpayers pay for the legal cost of the Henry County Water and Sew Authority. We've paid, Thomas Brothers, it's paid both ways, our taxes and our funds. So at this point, I'd like this board to request an investigation of a waste of the Henry County taxpayers' money. Was the Henry County Water Authority correct in turning down the South River as a polluted source of water and building the residential Tuscaloosa Creek Reservoir? Apparently, the Henry County Water and Sew Authority attorney has now decided that the South River suddenly is suitable. In court, one of their hired attorneys told the judge they were going to build a water treatment facility at Snapping Shoals. I said all that to say this. This is my question, the bottom line. Henry County Water Authority has a very costly scientific environmental study stating that due to pollution, the South River waters can never be used by Henry County. And we all know Snapping Shoals is downstream of metro Atlanta, it's an urbanized river, and it really isn't a clean river. The Henry County Water Authority attorney states just the opposite. He says, "Hey, you can use the water." So the question remains, will Henry County citizens be drinking South River water? You five member of BOC, Board of Commissioners members, appoint the five members of the Water Authority Board. My question is, who is in charge at the Henry County Water Authority? The five members that you appoint, are they a hired attorney? That's about it. I certainly hope you'll do an investigation. Me as a taxpayer, I'm not complaining. I love Henry County. I think it's the greatest county around, but something's wrong. I'm a retired military person. I could not, as captain of the ship, I could not run my ship in this fashion. I'd find myself where I wouldn't want to be. I bought a booklet along explaining in detail what has happened with the Henry County Water Authority and this whole debacle. I'd like to please give it to this lady to pass out to you gentlemen later. And I thank you so much for letting me talk. Please don't think I was complaining. I'm just giving you the facts. God bless you.
Thank you so much. Next, we recognize Mr. Bill Tony, Commissioner's calling back and county manager. Mr. Tony, state your name and address for the record, please.
Bill Tony, 1652 Highway 155 North, McDonough. The man's right, we do have, we have a problem in this county. The problem is, number one, Mr. Barham, you're my commissioner, and Mr. Moss, you're my commissioner. I call you, and I've been blocked from your phone to where I can't even talk to you. I have to get here tonight and pin you up to talk to you, and to get a county phone. And I've been calling you on your personal phone now for about a year and a half. I don't know why you decided to block my number or block me from your call. I've also told Mr. Moss to ask you to give me a call. I have some things I'd like to talk over with you. I've asked Mr. Moss to go over some emails, which I would love to send them to you where we can discuss some stuff that's in the emails. I asked Mr. Moss tonight, what is your opinion? He said, "I've got my opinion, you got yours." I said, "What is your opinion?" He said, "It's my opinion." Look, sir, you work for the county. You're getting $35,000 a year. You're getting $35,000 a year. I pay tax on six houses in this county. I have a right to know what's going on. I have a right to meet with you. I have a right to talk to you. I hope y'all agree with that. I've called Mr. Preston, and he never calls anybody back. You guys need to get on board with this thing and start paying attention. Speaking of Mr. Preston, me and you talked about, I've gone through some emails, and I found your company on county business on every one. I mean, hundreds of emails with your county, your county email with your personal company on it. Now what I have found, you're an investment company. I'm assuming you're going to say. But I've also found out that our county manager's in the investment business. I didn't know that until recently.
You need to address everything to the chair.
I'm sorry. But you also have, and I was wondering if there's any connection between Mr. Preston and Mr. Walker. Seems they're in the same group. I think that he's still listed as president of Azure Investments. And I don't know if y'all met through this, through this investment deal or whatever, when he come to board, on board here, but I think it's highly improper for everybody, or for Mr. Preston to have his, and he's taken it off, I'm assuming, because he said he was going to take it off, of his company on every email he sent for the county. To me, if I was, if I was in his position, I wouldn't put my company on every email that I sent out. So with that being said, I hope that y'all, we can get some change going in the county. And I'd like to say that I hope Shay Mathis gets better, and I'm sorry that she got treated the way she got treated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, consent items. The following items shall be considered on consent agendas, and I'm going to tell you the note. Before voting on the consent agendas, the chair will provide opportunity to add or delete the items. The first one is election. Intergovernmental agreement for the provision of election services between Henry County, Georgia, and the City of Locust Grove. Fire department. A resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving a grant acceptance from the Georgia Emergency Management Agency for the purpose of hazardous material response. Also, another fire department. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing Henry County to enter into an automatic mutual aid agreement with Butch County. Technological services. It's a resolution to approve the disposal of surplus items and equipment. Police department. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners to retire a Belgian Manonese dog from service with the Henry County Police Department. If somebody would move on the consent item, unless they want to add, change, or delete it, if somebody would move, we adopt.
So move.
Have a motion District Four, Second District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. That ends the consent. Next, we'll move into Emergency Management Agency. This is number seven. In your book, Residency Approved Award of Radio System Consultant Services Contractor, Mr. Don Ash. Greetings.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon, this evening. As a part of SPOLOX IV project, there is a system upgrade to our emergency communication public safety radio system. The county has agreed, and we've looked at bringing in consulting services to help us determine which direction and what's the most feasible route and to accomplish everything we need to do in this project. We put RFP out, we had 13 engineering consulting groups come in, we formed a committee, we evaluated, we interviewed the top three. I'm standing before you today with a recommendation to approve to federal consulting, not to exceed the sum of $94,934.0 as phased projects into the project. The funds are available and will come from E911 funds.
Have a resolution in the book, the Board of Commissioners to approve RFP number 15-03, Radio System Consultant Services. Do you have a question?
I just wanted to ask, Don, who comprised the committee that...
The committee consisted of representatives from our fire department, our police, our technology services, and E911.
The stakeholders, basically.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. That's awesome.
Anybody else have any question or comment?
Don, you said this money's going to come out of SPOLOX.
The project, the SPOLOX IV project, will fund the radio system. The consulting services will come out of E911 fees, communication fees. Yes, sir.
Any more comments, questions? If not, have a resolution. Have a motion District Five, Second District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, by way, since I'm here, just to update the board and to show appreciation to the stakeholders involved in Henry County. Last week, we had our early winter tabletop exercise preparing for winter weather, knowing that the weather's probably going to be exceedingly cold again this year. And I appreciate the support from the county manager and the team, and to report to you, we had 53 of 53 participants, 100% participation in it.
How about also giving a briefing about Ebola? Y'all had many meetings about Ebola, and I know everybody's...
Yes, sir. As being proactive as it relates to Ebola, our stakeholders involving our fire, police, public safety, and all our stakeholders have come together proactively to meet. Our fire division have established, set guidelines and protocols along with emergency management to keep everyone involved in a prize as any incident may affect us as well.
Thank you. You do a good job, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, Facilities Maintenance Bid Award for replacement of the HVAC units in the Henry County Administration Building. Mr. Kibble. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Facility Maintenance Department has requested the replacement of the HVAC units located at Henry County Administration Building as a turnkey project. This request was bid through the Purchasing Department and posted on websites of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, ACCGGLGA. Bid invitations were sent out via Team Georgia Marketplace, and five bids were received, and the bid tabulations are attached. Department personnel recommend the award to the low bidder, Mechanical Services of Haightville, Georgia, in the amount of $313,000. And the funds are available in my department's budget.
Anybody having any questions or comment? And I have a resolution that the Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for the replacement of a HVAC unit at the Henry County Administration Building. Have a motion District Four, Second District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you. Next, we have a service provider for credit card processing, Mr. Rod Gray, Purchasing Director. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Several departments had expressed an interest to be able to accept credit card payments for the services they render to the citizens. And the starting point was the system that was currently utilized by the Tax Commissioner. The interested parties were looking for a revenue and an expense neutral system, so there's no cost involved, and there's no money generated on behalf of the county with the system. The recommendation from the staff is to enter into an agreement with Certified Payments as a third-party provider for credit card processing. Certified Payments shall provide credit card processing and online access to payment data and reports at no cost to Henry County. They shall provide credit card reader devices to Henry County at no cost. The system will work as a 2.35% of the transaction amount, or a minimum of $1 will be charged for the convenience fee. However, the county still will accept cash and checks. Credit card payments are not mandatory. And as stated, the staff recommends that Henry County Board of Commissioners agree to the terms set forth in the Certified Payment Service Provider Agreement.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners to establish a service provider agreement for credit card processing? Have a motion District Four, Second District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, under Department Transportation Reimbursement for Funds from SPOLOX II to General Funds for Work Performed by Henry County Department of Transportation at Heritage Park, Mr. Terry McMichael.
Good evening, Chairman, Board Members. Heritage Park was a designated SPOLOX II project. Management decided Henry County DOT would do the site grading and stormwater conveyance work for the entire site. SPOLOX Capital Director contracted out the remainder of the work to build an office building that currently houses the recreation and extension offices and the covered arena. The DOT was assigned a SPOLOX project number, number DTSPO2, so costs could be tracked and appropriately documented. Henry County DOT did the construction staking, placement of stormwater conveyances, site grading, and some erosion control. The cost of doing this work came out of DOT's annual budget at the time of construction. SPOLOX II Heritage Park Project has $181,078.61 in funding that was earmarked to reimburse the DOT for cost of doing this completed work. DOT is requesting that this funding reimburse the general fund for the cost of work completed at the park. Finance Department has reviewed and agrees that DOT has spent $180,945.56 on the heritage project. DOT is asking that this money be placed in the capital line item account so DOT can purchase much-needed equipment with that funding.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Just for the record to be, we are, this is coming from SPOLOX II, correct?
It is correct.
I just wanted to be sure about that. Thank you.
Anybody else have any question to comment? Have a motion, correction, have a resolution, reimbursement of funds from SPOLOX II to General Funds, capital fund line items for work performed at Heritage Park under project DTSPO2. Have a motion District Four, Second District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. You have the next one, too. Next one is approval of purchase asphalt for additional addition of a left turn lane at Hampton High School in Hampton, Georgia.
The Board of Education completed building the Hampton High School on Hampton Locust Grove Road in time for the school to open this fall. The Board of Education is not able to spend their funds on road improvements, so the work required to provide a left turn into the schools falls on the responsibility of Henry County Board of Commissioners. After the school entrance and improvements were done, Henry County DOT went out and collected the survey data so the left turn lane could be designed. The design was completed on October the 2nd, 2014. Once the design was done, we determined the quantities and estimated cost. The estimate for the asphalt portion of this work was $26,000. This amount requires a purchase order to be approved by the board. Because this paving needed to be done in place as soon as possible in order to provide a safe way for buses and cars to make left turns into the schools, we needed to pursue, to proceed as soon as possible. The fall break occurred from October 6th through October 11th, which provided the safest opportunity for us to do the work because of traffic control. For us to be out there in front of three schools trying to pay with lane closures and flagmen in place while buses and cars were trying to enter and leave the school would have created significant safety risks. Permission was sought and approved by the county manager to proceed with issuing a purchase order for the asphalt. We have completed that work, so this is being brought to the board to prefer, to perfect the record, you know, of the purchase. So we have done the work, we have spent it, but we just want to get the board to approve that purchase. So it was done as an emergency.
Anybody got any questions or comment? If not, we got, approve the purchase of asphalt for the addition, addition of a left turn lane at Hampton High School on Hampton Locust Grove Road. Have a motion District Two?
Second.
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we have approval to purchase asphalt for the emergency repair on Rocky Creek Road.
Henry County DOT received a complaint of dips on Rocky Creek Road where Thompson Creek goes under the road. The director and the paving coordinator inspected and term and settlement on each side of the culvert was severe enough to cause motorist difficulty in keeping their vehicle in control. The paving crew was directed to repair as quickly as possible. They were able to mill out soft places and place twenty-five millimeter or base asphalt back in to stabilize, then it was topped with nine-and-a-half millimeter to cover and provide a riding surface. It took nine, a hundred and ninety-two point two-seven tons of twenty-five miller, twenty-five millimeter asphalt, which is a base asphalt, at forty-eight dollars and ninety-one cent per ton, and a hundred and seventy-six point seven-nine tons of nine-and-a-half millimeter asphalt, and that's your riding surface asphalt, at fifty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents per ton to repair, at a total cost of eighteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. County Manager did approve the invoice for payment, but Board action is needed, is required as the purchase order, as the purchase is over ten thousand. We're asking the Board to approve the eighteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-two cents purchase of asphalt from C.W. Matthews for the emergency repair of Rocky Creek Road. This, again, is done to perfect the record.
Any comments, questions? Have a motion District Two, Second District One, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you. Okay. Next, we're gonna have, this is a public hearing, request to rename Ford Drive as Kellytown, as Kellytown Road, and a portion of Kellytown Road as Old Kellytown. Terry McMichels.
This item is to request a change to, to the name of Ford Drive to Kellytown Road between one fifty-five and Kellytown Road, so we're gonna change that section from Ford to rename it Kellytown. Additionally, is requested to rename the remaining portion of Kellytown Road south of its current intersection with Ford Drive to Old Kellytown Road.
Do you have a visual you could put up where-
I do, sir.
-where people could see exactly what's happening? An overlay?
Ford Drive, these, or it currently goes from here all the way to the intersection of one fifty-five, so this is where Ford Drive is now. When Georgia DOT did that project, they realigned Kellytown, which used to go down this way and went all the way and intersected back with one fifty-five. When they did the project, they realigned Kellytown and swung it where it now goes through where Ford, well, a little south of where Ford Road was. So now Kellytown Road comes up here and swings all the way. This old section of Kellytown Road, now to get to this area, you have to come up here, and there's a, an intersection here where you turn and go down in this new section until you hit the old part, and then this part still remains till you get where they cul-de-sac it down here, and then there's a section down here that they removed. So this section of Kellytown no longer touches one fifty-five, so there's no access to Kellytown whatsoever in this area. To get to Kellytown, you gotta come up here, currently go down Ford, and then as you ride through this intersection, you're back on Kellytown, as well as, and then Kellytown, as it is today, stops here and then goes south. What we're asking for is to rename this section of Ford, to rename it Kellytown, so Kellytown flows smoothly all the way to one fifty-five. To rename, now this is gone, so it's no longer there, but to rename from this point where it cul-de-sacs, change the name of that to Old Kellytown.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Chairman, if I may, just a little more explanation would probably be beneficial to the Board, I think. In order to do this, we met internally with several departments in the county that are affected by things like this. This got initiated from some citizens that called our office and said there's a lot of confusion out there about the addressing and access, so we met internally with Don Ash and nine-one-one, we met with Cooper Keller from the Tax Assessor's Office, who is the, has the job of assigning addresses, of course, the DOT, all the people that are kinda involved in road names, emergency responses, and addressing. So collectively, we met in kinda internally what we thought would be a good idea. We came up with this as a solution, so this is at the request of some citizens of why this is at the Board tonight, so I realize this is a public hearing, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
How many properties are on Ford Drive?
There is a church on Ford Drive. And it will affect the church, 'cause of their, now, the, what we're proposing is that the street number on Ford Drive will remain the same, so if whatever their street number is, will remain the same, but instead of Ford Drive, it'll become Kellytown Road. So the number remains the same, but the, the address still changes, but same street number worked out where they can keep the same street number, but it'll go to Kellytown Road.
Any other questions?
Well, I think, make a comment about it, in the event that the church is the only other, that's the only piece of property there, correct?
On Ford.
On Ford Road.
Well, there's a cemetery, but-
Yeah. But the Ford, I mean, you know, to be fair, if we make that change, to be fair, is to make sure we compensate the church for any letterhead or any type of stationery or anything that they have printed that's got Ford Road on it, so that we make them whole. I don't think we should do that and do the other, but I know it's a public hearing, so I'll wait and-
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? If not, I'm gonna open the floor up, and the ground rules would be, I'm gonna give fifteen minutes for people to oppose it, I'm gonna give fifteen minutes, people to speak in favor of it, with no objection from the Board, and you get fifteen minutes total time, so if you have one person speak for fifteen minutes, that's good, or if you have five people to speak, that would be good as well, too. So with no objections, I'll open the floor up, and if you would, approach your podium, give you a name and address, please, and the clock will start.
Good evening, I am Pastor Strickland at one-eleven Ford Drive Victory Tabernacle Church International.
Is this the church in question?
Yes, sir.
Got you.
So some of our, tonight, our members have come in opposition to the name change, and at this time, we're saying that, and thank you, District Four Commissioner, that the expense to do this would be great for us, and at this point, we're not in a position to handle all the adjusting and the changing, so that's our opposition tonight.
Okay.
Impact, the expense?
Yes, sir, at this time.
Does somebody else like to speak?
These are the church members, well.
Okay.
I spoke on our behalf.
Okay, they, these are people that oppose-
Yes, we're members of the church.
Members of the church, if you would stand again, please, the members that oppose this. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Does anybody like to speak in favor of this? Okay, you have fifteen minutes, so thirteen, fifty-five remaining, someone reset. Okay.
Hello, my name is Dottie Green, I live on Kibbie Road, which runs off Kellytown. This is another, a neighbor that's on Ashland Ridge that runs off of Kellytown, and we're for the name change. I believe it's, Kellytown's always run off Highway one fifty-five, and it's been confusing, and I think for a safety reason, as was stated a few minutes ago, that it should be Kellytown Road, and the Old Kellytown would be what was previous, which is now a cul-de-sac and a dead end.
Would that affect your address?
No, I'm on Kibbie Road and Ashland Ridge, right off what's, wants to be called the Old Kellytown. So, in this way, it would bring Ford Road is really just a small, a small section before you hit another sign that says Kellytown, so prevent a lot of confusion if it was just Kellytown Road as it veered off from Highway one fifty-five north or south. Thank you, so we're for it, we're for the name change.
Okay, thank you so much. Anybody else like to be recognized to speak in favor? If not, I'm gonna terminate the, our meeting requirements for the public hearing, the clock is off. Terry, do you have any more comments? We have a yield of Florida District Four.
Mr. Chair, the, the, having lived in that area for an awfully long time, when I first moved to Henry County, I lived off Asa Mosley Road, and Asa Mosley Road connects to one fifty-five, well, at Bowen and one fifty-five, as well as to Kellytown on the other end, Kellytown Road. Going through that intersection, not that area, on a number of occasions, it is confusing if you're not from that area. Now, I wanna make sure that any expenses that are incurred by the church, that we handle that in whatever we have to do as a Board, and I hope that I'll get the Board approval in order to do that. Having had some conversation with the stakeholders involved, I mean, I have not had any conversation with the church, I actually did not think that this would be an issue, simply because it's, when you're coming around Kellytown Road, to those that are familiar, you're coming around Kellytown, and then there's a sign that says you're now on Ford Road. It, it is confusing, I have had a number of calls that were in support, I actually had no calls of anybody that was in opposition, and I know maybe you didn't know how to get ahold of me, other than on the website, on the Commissioner's website. Having said that, I, there again, I want to add to them, to the, that we do whatever's necessary to make the church whole, and any of their stationery and anything that they have. Having said that, I'm gonna move that we make those changes to Kellytown and Old Kellytown Road. I, I believe in my heart it's the right thing to do, I know it's confusing when I go through there, and, and I've had enough, you know, others that have called me and expressed an interest in doing that, so I make the motion-
We have a motion to approve, resolution question, a road name change from Ford Drive to Kellytown Road and a portion of Kellytown. Have a motion?
The objection, the objection from the church-
He said that the county would reimburse the church any expense-
Yes, sir, I wouldn't let that in, that's, that's in my motion, that, we had that, yes, sir.
I said, if the expense is the only objection from the church, I would support if the rest of the Board supports covering the church's expenses. I'm, I will go ahead and make a, a second on that. I have driven the road, it is confusing with both name, with the name changes and having both of those names on that road, so it needs to be changed, but not at the expense of the church, I wanna make the church whole as well.
Okay. Why don't we simplify this? If, what are the, the pastor, if you would represent the church again, sir? You could make this easier, make it difficult on all of us. Do you think your church membership would be amenable to this change if we compensated the church of all costs to make you whole? Sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
We could literally do that, Mr. Chair, with the cost to cure, we've done that in some other, in some other cases, and that way, we make sure that we make the church whole. I, it just, you know, if we make you whole, make sure that, that nothing, it's not fair for anything to come out of your pocket to have to do this because of this change, we wanna make sure that you're, that you've done that. You know, in the past, on several other things, we've just, we came up with a number, and we put a number in place, and that was the cost to cure number that we used, and, Mr. Chair, is that, that, I mean, that's-
I, I think we need to, to, to put, not to exceed an amount, whatever that amount is, and then it has to be, obviously, for scrutiny on public records-
Do you have the ability to tell us what, what we're looking at from a dollar standpoint?
We haven't looked at that, but we will, we're looking at and getting in touch with you.
I'm sorry, sir.
I said, we have not looked into that yet, but we will look into that and give you that number.
I think what's fair is to make sure that we do it, and, and I believe the pastor will be fair with us, I don't think he's gonna do anything, I think.
Really keeping, coming back on the motion, would, would the Board allow, give the Chair the ability to approve a figure not to exceed an amount, and that way, we don't have to come back, and that way, it would be based on invoices-
I don't know what kind of number to put, I'm not in the stationery business, I don't know what number to-
Two thousand dollars?
How much?
Two thousand, I, I, I don't know if that would be-
How about?
That's not enough?
Well, I just, I mean, I think-
What's your professional opinion?
Well, they renamed South Cedar Street to Zack Kenton Parkway, back when my business was located on Zack Kent, well, South Cedar Street, it changed, and business cards are usually two fifty to, to three fifty per, per set of business cards. Stationery, God, it's been a while since I bought stationery, but a ream is, you know, five hundred sheets, and church bulletins. I was, in my head, and I don't have the exact numbers, but I think you need to probably go up to five thousand.
There's a sign that sits right on Ford Drive, that has the name of the church on it, that sign alone was ten thousand dollars to replace. I do know that number.
Yeah, so you're saying the signage has actually got the street number on the sign, too?
Well, the number, you just be changing out-
We can just change the number, right?
Well, no, but it's a street name is different.
The name, the, yeah, well-
Why don't we do this? Since apparently time is not of essence, why don't, why don't we table this, 'cause there'd be no harm tabling it, and let-
And then allow the pastor to get the numbers together, get them back to us-
Right.
That's a better idea.
And move forward.
Does that, does that work for y'all?
Yes, sir, it does.
If somebody will withdraw the second, and withdraw the motion?
I withdraw the motion.
Okay, does somebody move that we table this until such time, we have a motion from District One to table this issue until such time the church and DOT can come up with the cost to make the church whole? So we have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a second, District Four. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign.
We just want to make sure we're fair.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next, Budget, Resolution to reallocate designated funds from Rockaway Road to Anvil Road. Rocky.
Good afternoon, good evening, Chairman, Board Members. East Atlanta Road, Rockaway, Rockaway Road Extension is a designated SPOLOX IV priority one project. A budget amendment in the amount of four million dollars is needed for roadway and construction on the Anvil Block Road project. Four million dollars is available in the East Atlanta Road, Rockaway Road Extension project. Staff recommends approval of budget amendment to reallocating the funds from the East Atlanta Road slash Rockaway Road project to, in the amount of four million, for roadway and construction to the Anvil Block Road project.
Anybody have any questions or comment? If not, we have a resolution in the book, with the Board of Commissioners to approve a budget amendment reallocating funds from East Atlanta Road, Rockaway Road Extension to Anvil Block Road.
So move.
Have a motion District Five, Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, Constitutional Public Hearing, Plan for Henry County to enter into a multi-year purchase contract for the purpose of refinancing STI Institution and Government, Inc., at lower rates, the remaining balance of the two oh six two eight installment, seven hundred and fifty-five public funds, and effect a savings, to effect a savings of almost six hundred thousand dollars. Fred, Finance Director, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Board. On September second, the Board approved the refinancing of two- On September 2nd, the Board approved the refinancing of two jail installment sales agreements that are presently with Capital One Public Funding to instead do the refinancing with STI Institutional and Governmental, Inc. The amount's over $10 million, and they're to mature on, in 2023. As I mentioned, the results in over, almost a $600,000 savings, with the interest rate being reduced to 2.32% from the present 3.99%. Bond Council has suggested a public hearing, which this is, since we are going with a new lender, even though a public hearing was held when the installment sales agreements were originally done, and that's the purpose of the hearing.
Anybody have any questions or comment? If not, I will open the floor up for 15 minutes for public comments related to this issue about refinancing at a lower rate for the 206-28 installment sales agreement with Capital One Public Funding, and if, in effect, is saving the county almost $600,000. Anybody like to be recognized? If you do, approach the, the podium and give your name and address. See you none. Does this, does this take a motion to do this, or this constitutes?
No, sir.
That just meets the requirements of a public hearing?
Just required a public hearing.
I declare that the public hearing has been held and attest that it's over, and that meets that satisfaction. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Next, we have a resolution to approve a general form of documents and execution at time of closing jail refinancing.
Again, in, as the, as the previous hearing, and again on September 2nd, with the Board's approval of refinancing the $10 million in installment sales agreements and affecting the savings, Bond Council has put together documents, as well as working with the new lender to request the approval of those certain general form documents for the December 1st, 2014 close. Each of you received from me this afternoon, about lunch, four minor changes that were requested by the lender's council. They're minor changes. Our county attorney has reviewed them and has no problems. The other documents that are in the, your package, your agenda package, remain. The only change are those four minor changes on the resolution, as I pointed out this afternoon in the email to each of you. You should have a clean copy of the resolution that was given to you so that there's no confusion on the, between the two.
Anybody have any comments or questions? If not, you have a, a resolution to authorize and redirect, correction, direct the execution by Henry County Georgia to the county of a certain installment sale agreement with Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, and a certain agreement regarding environmental activity in connection therewith to provide a statement of legislative finding and intent to authorize a transfer of property to provide an effective date and for other purposes. Does somebody move to approve that resolution?
Move to approve with the Finance Director's revisions.
Second.
Have a motion from District Two, second from District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. Thank you. Next, we have approval to commence with County SPOLOSH IV Tier One projects and to proceed with SPOLOSH IV bonding finance. Fred.
As I mentioned, this is a four-prong approval. First is to approve 13.165 million in county bonds financing. Second will require rescinding of Resolution 14-44 from February this year. Third will be to approve up to $17,950,000 in for the cities to bond. And then the fourth is to approve allocation of the county bond cost. Each of the commissioner, each of the commissioners has worked in the last month or so to review and prioritize their SPOLOSH IV projects for 2014 and 15 calendar years. Total amount of expected expenditures for these years, our Priority One projects is $53,781,415. Anticipated collections will be $38,427,328. This will leave a shortfall of $15,354,087. We're requesting $13,165,000. There's the difference of $2 million. This will be made up by the sale of the bonds at a premium of approximately 113.273, which means for every dollar of bonds that we issue, we'll receive $113.27. That will, in essence, reduce the yield or produce a yield more in line with around 1.7% overall. As a result, that premium that we'll receive will be additional funds that will make up the difference between the shortfall I mentioned and the, what we are bonding. The second item, because of the re, redoing all of the projects and how much money we will need, when Resolution 1444 in February was approved, authorizing financing for two districts, those projects have not required any financing because one of them specifically was able to negotiate a better payment terms, delaying it, and thus not needing the bonding or financing. As a result, with that still out there, it would duplicate the efforts of the $13,165 bond request. So, the request is to rescind it, as all of it is covered within the $13 million. The third one is the cities, and their bonding requests must be approved by the county as well as by each city. Three of the four cities are desiring bonding, a total of up to $17,950. And I want to emphasize the "up to" because at this point, some of the cities I've talked to are not really sure of the figure they gave, whether it will go, stay at that figure, or possibly be reduced. So, the figure is "up to." And the other is, to the extent their bonds are sold at a premium, as ours are, the $17 million would probably be reduced by at least a million bucks as well. The total bond between the county and the cities for these two amounts will be over $31 million. The voters approved up to $100 million, so we're well below what the voters approved. And the fourth item is the, with the cost of, of putting these bonds out there, there will be cost for attorneys and underwriter fees, and there will also obviously be, be the interest cost on the ongoing basis while the bonds are in place. Worksheets were provided within your package to show the calculation. I just want to point out one item that I overlooked and thought about after I presented that, is that I mentioned the premium earlier, which is about $1.8 million at the present yields. This could change in the next couple of months, based on what happens with the economy, the feds, and a whole bunch of other things. So far, it looks, from all the reports I'm getting, it should stabilize to where it's at or be very close. That $1.8 million will be amortized over the life of the bonds, and as a result, there will be a savings passed along to each district and countywide project group that will offset the bond cost. So, there, there's money that will come back at you for that. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions or comment? We have a resolution authorizing approval to commence County SPOLOSH IV Tier One projects and proceeds with SPOLOSH IV bond financing of $31,115,000. For county and city SPOLOSH IV projects, rescind Resolution 1444, approve allocation of bond costs.
So moved.
So moved from District Five.
Second.
Second from District One. Let me ask a question since we discussed this. Down here on the countywide projects, which I support all these, it, it says Fire Station Countywide, one of three. Then it says Fire Station Countywide, two of three. What, what does, what does that mean?
I believe there were three fire stations that were approved within the countywide project list. I don't have exactly where they are. I think the commissioners might know, or Ron could possibly give you the exact locations of where they're at, but there are three of them that are in capital projects. This will be...
I know two is in District Two, two new ones, and one is in District Four.
Right.
Okay, so which, which, which one would be built out of the...
District One and Two share one of those. I mean, we're, they're, they kind of are, it's on the line. Well, they benefit us all. Say it again?
Where, where is this? Walker Road?
Yeah, it's the one, yeah, I mean, it is the one.
Chairman of the FMA, the three fire stations are in the Llewella area, and that would be in the Walker Drive area. It's, it's one. The next one would be at North Mount Carmel, which would be at the park or on a county-owned property at the park, and the third one is in Kellytown, on the Kellytown Park property.
When do we think these will be completed?
The first, we, we currently have out RFQs, requests for qualifications. We have a committee that's reviewing those right now. We received, I believe it was 18 responses. Mr. Chairman, our intent is to design all three of the fire stations exactly the same. Okay, so we have a cost savings as far as the, and the first station that we would put out to bid, which would be in the springtime, would be the Llewella Station.
So, how, what's construction time?
Approximately a year, maybe 14 months for construction.
By that time, we would have enough monies to staff it. Is that, is that what we're talking about? What's, what's the, it costs $1.2 million a piece to staff it. So, if you're looking at all three of them, you're looking at $3.6 million to open all three of them. That can't come out of SPOLOSH funds, so I'm just asking, if somebody knows how we're going to staff them.
It will be in addition to...
Say again?
It will be in addition to the general fund, $1.2 million per year.
So, it'll be in addition to the general fund. We're hoping that the tax digest continues to grow.
It would definitely intend to grow.
And, you know, I do want to commend, I think it's one, Chairman, can I make a comment?
Yes.
You know, when we talked about the SPOLOSH list, you know, we had a great SPOLOSH committee that put together a lot of this stuff, and one of the, I think, the great pivots that we made with this discussion was that we switched public safety items to the countywide list, is because, I mean, let's face it, the safety is, that's one of our primary foundations of what we're supposed to provide. And, and we saw the way insurance companies are calculating those ISO ratings. We had a lot of citizens who were no longer being covered and protected, so, I mean, that's one of those things where it's, believe me, I'm, we're all concerned about how we do it, but I think it's the right thing to do to make sure we, we get those fire stations built, and we're going to find a way to, to get staff in there. I think you, I don't, I don't think you're suggesting that we don't build the fire stations.
I'm not suggesting that at all, but what I'm saying is, would you tell me we can staff all three of these, which I would be for, and not increase payroll and tax?
I mean, you, you just mentioned $1.2 million a year, correct?
A piece is what I was told.
Right, so if you, if you're talking about three fire stations, we're talking about, you know, essentially $3.6 million. You know, our, our average budget, you know, our tax digest is over $100 million. What we're talking about is that, you have to ask yourself, have properties appreciated 3% in the last year? And I, I think there's a good chance that our, our next tax digest will hopefully be greater than 3% in the next year.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? No, we got another question I had. The cities and their portions are going to pay their pro-rata share of the bonding, because the bond money comes out in the beginning. They, the bond money by law is collected, whatever, January, February, and March of each year to retire the bond.
Each city, yes, each city has their own allocation, their percentage of allocation. So, the SPOLOSH money that are collected, regions, as the trustee receives all those funds, they keep whatever portion or all of it until such time as sufficient funds are in trustee to make the semi-annual payments.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions to comment? If not, we have a resolution in the book. It's been a motion, it's been second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same way. Thank you. Next, we have approval of a professional firm of SPOLOSH IV bonding. Fred Alata.
With the approval that you just have had of the $13 million of bonding, in order to allow bonding, the bonding to get done over the next couple of months and be able to get the funds by the end of the year, it requires certain firms doing certain things. What you have before you is a list of the underwriter council, under, the underwriter itself is Raymond James, underwriter counsel, Sutherland, Asbill, and Brennan, bond counsel, Smith, Gambrill, and Russell, issuer counsel, Fincher, Denmark, and Williams, bond registrars is Presley and Pace, is Region Banks and Rick J., Regions Bank, and the council of the cities will be Smith, Welch, Webb, and White.
Anybody have any questions? I only have a comment. On this, the insurer council, which is representing the county, is that something our local county attorney could handle?
Mr. Chairman, I could do it if that was the direction of the board, but that's not the way the county set up its legal services. The contract that Fincher, Denmark entered into provided for them to serve as local counsel. The contract I entered into excluded local counsel. So, it would, it would not conform to the way the county set up its legal services.
So, and, and what you said in the past, we had a, a full-time county manager, I mean, a county attorney. So, in, in the O3 bonds, that, that was handled by an outside source instead of inside. Is that what?
No, I didn't say that. I said, under your current, the current way it works is the contract with Fincher, Denmark calls for Fincher, Denmark to do it. My contract does not call for me to do it. I priced my contract knowing that I wouldn't be doing it.
Just trying to save it.
I don't know what, I don't know what the, I don't know how it happened in 2003. I couldn't...
I don't know either, that's why I asked. Okay. We have a resolution authorizing professional firms for the purpose of bonding, bonding county and city SPOLOSH IV projects. Have a motion, District One?
Second.
Second, District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Next, we have a resolution to rescind Resolution 14-209 for a lease purchase of Field Sports Lighting and approve the purchase agreement for Field Sports Lighting, Tanger Station Ball Field, and Locust Grove using budgeted SPOLOSH IV funds. Mr. Burke-Halting.
Good evening, commissioners, good evening. There's a need to rescind Resolution Number 14209, which was passed on the 8/19 of this year, which approved the lease purchase of Field Sports Lighting at the Tanger Ball Fields in Locust Grove. Due to the decision to bond SPOLOSH IV funds, SPOLOSH can save $9,693.75 of finance charges by purchasing the lights versus entering into the purse, lease, purse, purchase/lease agreement, which was Resolution Number 1409. The Henry County SPOLOSH Department is requesting authorization to use SPOLOSH IV funds to purchase the Field Sports Lighting for Tanger Station Ball Fields in Locust Grove. Musco Lighting provided a quote of $241,000 to purchase Field Sports Lighting for three softball fields at Tanger Station Ball Fields in Locust Grove. Musco Lighting is a sole-source vendor for Henry County Parks and Recreation for Field Sports Lighting and attached as a sole-source letter to the resolution and is utilized in numerous Henry County parks. The SPOLOSH Department has budgeted funds for improvement at Tanger Station Ball Fields and Locust Grove in the SPOLOSH IV calendar year 2014 budget.
Anybody have any questions or comment? If not, we have a resolution with the Board of Commissioners rescinding Resolution 14-209 and approving the purchase agreement for Field Sports Lighting of Tanger Station Ball Field in Locust Grove.
So moved.
Have a motion, District One?
Second.
Second, District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move into planning and zoning a public hearing for the purpose of approving a resolution to adopt the Short Term Work Program and Capital Improvement Element Annual Update 2014-2018. Mr. Gilbert, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. The request that is before you tonight is for a public hearing for the Short Term Work Program and Capital Improvement Element Annual Update and Amendment to the Henry County Comprehensive Plan. The Short Term Work Program, 2014 through 2018, and Capital Improvement Update was prepared by the Henry County Planning and Zoning Department with input from other respective county departments to update the status of projects undertaken to accomplish the goals and objectives of the Comprehensive Plan in accord... the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan in accordance with the Development Impact Fee compliance requirements and the minimum planning standards and procedures for local comprehensive planning established by the Georgia Planning Act. On August nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen, a public hearing was held by the Board of Commissioners to approve a resolution to transmit the short-term work program and CIE to the Department of Community Affairs and the Atlanta Regional Commission. Both agencies have determined that the annual submittal is in compliance with the Development Impact Fee Act and the minimum standards and procedures for local comprehensive planning. Staff is asking the Board to approve the resolution, um, to adopt the short-term work program and CIE for twenty fourteen through twenty eighteen. Do you have any questions?
If not, this requires a public hearing. Uh, without any objection from the Board, I'll open the floor for fifteen minutes to be heard, uh, for any citizens like to make any comments surrounding this short-term work program. And, uh, if you would, uh, uh, address the, the Board at the podium, give you a name and address, and you'll have fifteen minutes. Does anybody like to be recognized? No one like to be recognized, this constitutes a public hearing. Have a resolution in the book, short-term work program and capital improvement element annual update adoption and amendment to the Henry County Comprehensive Plan. Does somebody move in that direction?
So move.
Yep, have a motion District Five? Second from District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you. Uh, let's move down to Comp dash AM dash fourteen dash zero four. David C. Williams of Franklin, North Carolina, request an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan for properties located at five four nine zero Flake Mill Road at Land Lot two twenty of the twelfth district. The request is to amend the future land use designation from office to commercial in District Five, Stacy Jordan. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. The subject property is located on Flake's Mill Road, and that is within the Fairview Road Overlay District. The applicant is proposing to split off one acre of a larger ten-acre tract to develop as a car wash, and the regulations for this area require that three tests, if you will, be satisfied. The first, the project has to be supported by the future land use map of the Comprehensive Plan. The second, the subject property must have the right zoning district. And third, the provisions of the Fairview Road Overlay District must be satisfied. The subject property is located within the conventional suburban character area of the Fairview Road Overlay District. This character area requires that a car wash receive a conditional use special permit. On September the eleventh, the zoning board approved the conditional use for a car wash for the subject property contingent upon the rezoning of the subject property by the Board of Commissioners. The applicant has a concurrent request to rezone from RA to C-two to facilitate the development of the subject property for a car wash. However, the future land use map designates the subject property for office uses instead of commercial, and so the request that's before you at this present time is to request the Board to change the land use designation on the future land use map from office to commercial uses. The zoning advisory board has recommended approval of the applicant's request and further recommends that the parent parcel from which the subject property is taken would also be changed from office to commercial.
Anybody have any questions?
Is this, uh, consistent with, um, the land use plan? It looks like, um, uh, the proposed property is in between two commercial parcels?
Yes, sir, that is correct. If I could direct your attention to the zoning map, the subject property is located here on Flake's Mill Road. Immediately to the north is a development for self-storage, it's zone C-three. Immediately to the south of the parent parcel is the commercial area, that's, uh, along Panola Road, um, Flake's Mill, and Fairview Road, which is zone C-two, and the applicant's request is for C-two.
Okay, so this makes it, this, this, uh, makes the, um, the commercial property in this particular location whole, correct? Okay, thank you.
Now, we have a resolution approving a request by David C. Williams to amend the Henry County Future Land Use Map designation from office to commercial for a property located at fifty-four ninety Flake's Mill Road in Land Lot two twenty of the twelfth district, consisting of one acre, plus or minus.
So move.
Motion from District Five?
Second.
Second from District Two, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, so move. Correction, let's, let's back up. I am so sorry, that's a public hearing. Counsel, that does constitute a public hearing for this issue?
Yeah, just open it up for public hearing and take any comments.
Okay, so let's back up, uh, we, we, before we, if somebody would rescind the motion, I erred. If you...
Counsel, do I, do I need to rescind it, or?
I don't think you have to, it's, it's an improper motion and vote anyway, so I think you can, you can move on.
Okay, so let's, uh, I, I apologize, I erred. I even made a note, it wasn't, it wasn't flagged on here to be a public hearing, so I flagged it and I still missed it. But anyway, I'll open up the floor for fifteen minutes, uh, apiece, people like to be heard, uh, for it, and people like to be heard against it. So if you would, uh, come to the podium, state your name and address and indicate, uh, first, I will ask the ones that are in favor of it. So those that's in favor of it would come to the podium and state your name and address. No one is approaching, so I will give fifteen minutes for people that oppose this change. Uh, no one's standing, I determine that the public hearing has expired, and since there's no change, I would, I would declare that the motion is good and valid.
That's fine.
Thank you. Okay, let's move down to RZ, uh, fourteen oh nine. David C. Williams of Franklin, request a rezoning from RA residential agricultural to C-two commercial for the property located at, uh, fifty-four ninety Flake's Mill Road, Land Lot two twenty, exhibit number twenty-five. Stacy?
Chairman?
The zoning board has recommended approval of the applicant's request for rezoning from RA to C-two with six conditions. The first being that access to the site shall meet the minimum intersection site distance for the road's posted speed limit and shall be located so that the minimum spacing requirements are maintained as required by ordinance or as allowed by variance. Number two, the developer shall coordinate with the Henry County Department of Transportation regarding the design and construction of a deceleration lane slash acceleration taper to Henry County DOT standards. This may require acquisition of additional easement or right-of-way by the developer as well as possible relocation of utilities. Number three, the division of the subject property from parcel zero two five dash oh one dash oh oh seven dash oh 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 in substantial compliance with the survey submitted with the conditional use application and meeting the approval of the environmental compliance and plan review department shall be recorded before development plans are submitted. Number four, a fifteen-foot buffer shall be located along all property lines of the subject property adjacent to residentially zoned properties, meeting the approval of the environmental compliance and plan review department. Number five, primary ground signage shall consist of a monument-based sign that is consistent in design with the primary structure and shall not exceed eight feet in height. Number six, notwithstanding anything to the contrary herein, no zoning conditions imposed herein shall be interpreted or applied in such a manner so as to require any violation of any existing building development stormwater and/or other applicable codes.
Anybody have any questions for staff? If not, would applicant, President, come forward?
I have one question, uh, Stacy, um, all these conditions are consistent with the overlay as well as with the overlay district, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir, state your name and, uh, address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is David Williams from Franklin, North Carolina.
Okay, let me ask you this, in the event the Board, uh, may consider approving this, would you, are you agreeable with the six conditions?
Yes, sir.
You wouldn't have any objections to those?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, having said that, is that all you need to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna open the floor for fifteen minutes for anybody opposed this. So if anybody opposed this rezoning request, if you would, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Uh, haven't heard none, seen none. We have a resolution in the book approving the rezoning request by David C. Williams from RA residential agricultural to C-two general commercial for a property located at fifty-four ninety Flake's Mill Road in Land Lot two twenty of the twelfth district. Have a motion District Five?
Second.
Second from District Two, any further discussion? All in favor, uh, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we, we have a public hearing, uh, Comp dash AM dash fourteen oh three. Wayne Bagley of Atlanta, request an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan for properties located on east and west side of Fortson Road, the north and south side of Lower Woolsey Road, west of Highway forty-one nineteen, Richard Petty Boulevard, north of the Spaulding County Line, and east of the Clayton County Line, partially located within the Atlanta Motor Speedway Activity Center in Land Lots two fifty-five, two fifty-six, and the sixth district, Land Lot thirteen dash nineteen, forty-five dash fifty-one, and seventy-eight dash eighty-three of the third district. The request is to amend the future land use designation. Jeremy Gilbert.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. The applicant has multiple requests as it relates to amending the future land use map of the aforementioned properties. The applicant's first request is to be removed from the Atlanta Motor Speedway Activity Center. The applicant has nine parcels currently located within the Activity Center that are, that they would like to have removed. Out of the nine parcels, four of them are located wholly in the county, two of them are partially in the county and the city of Hampton, while the remaining three are wholly in the city of Hampton. While this request will not change anything in the city limits of Hampton, it is important to show the relation between the properties owned by the applicant. In evaluating the applicant's request, staff determined that the entire Activity Center needed to be evaluated rather than just the applicant's parcels. Therefore, staff began evaluating the entire Activity Center and is recommending multiple amendments to the Comprehensive Plan. Um, in reviewing the current Activity Center typology and the current development trends, staff is of the opinion that the Activity Center should be removed in its entirety rather than just removing the applicant's parcels. The reasoning behind removing the Activity Center is based on the fact that during the initial review of the Comprehensive Plan, and more specifically each Activity Center, the consultant only looked at the, what was developed at the time of review. It was never taken into consideration what was currently zoned or under construction, thus leaving us with Activity Centers that have to develop inconsistently with the topography proposed for each center type. To provide more insight into the area, the Activity Center is approximately two thousand six hundred and two plus or minus acres, which of, which four hundred and five acres is located within the city limits of Hampton and should not have been included in the Henry County Future Land Use Map, should have only been illustrated on the city's map. In developing this, currently there are two thousand one hundred and ninety-seven acres located in the county, of which twelve hundred and eleven acres is non-residential, nine hundred and eighty-six is residential, zero is at civic, and zero is open space. The proposed target typologies would be fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty plus or minus acres for non-residential, three hundred and thirty acres for residential, one hundred and nine acres for civic, and three hundred and thirty acres for open space. Um, the applicant's request to be removed from the Atlanta Motor Speedway Activity Center for the aforementioned properties is a reasonable request, given that the area will not likely develop as planned since residential developments would be removed in favor of civic, open space, and additional non-residential developments. The second part of the applicant's request is a little more intensive. In your staff report, we illustrated what the applicant's request was. They had seven parcels that they would like to change the future land use map designation for, um, on the future land use map. The first parcel ID number is a three hundred and thirty-two acre plus or minus tract of land, and it was divided into two pieces, one A and one, one and one A. The portion that is identified as one would be remaining the same, I'm sorry, yeah, one would remain the same. It's currently designated for commercial, they're wanting to keep it as commercial, but one A, they would like to change to an industrial land use. The next parcel, which is identified on the map as two and two A, um, they would like to go from residential, rural residential and high-density residential and some commercial to an industrial designation. Two A, um, they would like to have from rural residential to high-density residential. What's identified as number three on the map, um, the current classification is rural residential, they'd like to go to industrial. What's identified as number four, which is there approximately thirty-six acres, is currently designated for rural residential, they would like to change that to industrial. The next parcel, which would be five and five A, is approximately eight hundred and twenty-eight acres. The first, for five, they would like to change from rural residential to industrial. Five A, they would like to change from rural residential to high-density residential. Um, the next parcel would be number six shown on your map, it's approximately a hundred and eight acres. It is currently classified as rural residential, they're requesting to go to a high-density residential classification. And finally, parcel number seven, which is approximately a thirty-eight acre tract of land, is currently classified as ruled residential, and they'd like to go to high-density residential. The proposed change to remove the Activity Center on the future land use map will not be unduly detrimental to any of the property owners within the Activity Center, as they will still be afforded the opportunity to develop their properties in accordance with the future land use map currently assigned to their property, or they may request a future land use map amendment, as this applicant has. This request was heard by the zoning advisory board on September eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, and they did recommend approval with three conditions. The first condition being, remove all, remove the Atlanta Motor Speedway Activity Center designation from the future land use map, delete all references within the Henry County City's Joint Comprehensive Plan community agenda regarding the Atlanta Motor Speedway Activity Center, Appendix C, page C-one and C-five, amend the future land use map designation to, for the subject properties as illustrated on Attachment A. I'll answer any questions that the Board has.
Anybody have any questions? Did you indicate this would absolutely have no adverse, adverse effect on the city of Hampton?
It, what we're looking at tonight, none of the properties that were illustrated in the Activity Center that are in the city should not have been illustrated, so what they designated those properties for would remain the same. We're not taking, looking at anything that's in the...
And we're changing something that's contiguous to them, right?
Correct, we are.
Have, have they, uh, I, I guess it's been a public hearing, they, they, the record would indicate they had ample notice to object to anything that they're gonna object to. Would that be a fair statement?
That would be correct.
Anybody else have any questions, Jesse?
I know the applicant will probably be called forward in a little bit, but I've had an opportunity to talk to, to Mr. Bagley, and the, the one thing that gave me pause was the high-density, um, and that was also brought up in the minutes from the zoning advisory board hearing. Um, one of the things that we've talked about is a compromise, because I like, you know, you've heard me talk about it at other public meetings, some type of transition when you're doing things, so to go from high-density to RA just is, is not a smooth transition, so the, the flexibility compromise was to consider changing the high-density to medium-density residential. That way, there's a transition point, um, to get us away from high-density on that southern part.
Anybody else have any comments? If not, if not, I will ask the applicant to come forward and state his case, please. State your name and address for the records, please. State your name and address for the records, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. My name is Wayne Bagley. I'm the applicant for the case 14-03, 3350 Riverwood Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia. We've had several meetings and discussions with a lot of the Henry County officials leading up to long-term planning for this particular area, including the Development Authority, Planning Department, Water and Sewer, City of Hampton, as well as state and regional officials. We've also met with Commissioner Preston. Before we made this application, the application came because of these meetings. We discovered that we were included in this activity center and were not aware of it. This happened in 2009. We actually had some of the previous industrial zoning, pre-2009 inclusion of the activity center. So we're trying to kind of reverse that, not completely, but even with better information and planning to move forward. So that's what prompted us to make the application. As Mr. Gilbert stated, the current component percentages cannot be supported as currently designated. Although we only requested that our property be removed from the activity center as part one of our application, we're in full support of the planning staff's recommendation to eliminate it in its entirety. It just does not make any sense. Regarding the reclassification of our property, we're trying to incorporate all the discussions that we mentioned earlier. As you can see, we've got a pretty unique piece of property here. Please keep in mind that, you know, the size of the industrial tract designation requested does not reflect total usable land. If we can zoom, can we zoom out a little? Although it looks like a lot of property, there are a lot of things that we had to carefully consider. New roads and infrastructure, potential extension of the Georgia Highway 20 interchange, current topographical and utility restraints, and most importantly, current end-user trends that are requiring much larger areas to accommodate their needs. And that's something that we've done a lot of study with and got a lot of input from all the officials that I had mentioned earlier. So a tremendous amount of effort of all involved went into defining these particular areas. Now, with regard to the residential component, as it currently exists, which is in the activity center, there is a high-density residential component, and it didn't make any sense because it was up on Richard Petty Boulevard, right there across from the racetrack. So when we tried to reclassify our total tract area, what we decided to do was retain the high-density residential component, but just to move it to the southern end of the property where you would have a true transition or a traditional transition from an industrial to a rural agricultural. The high-density residential requirement was just used because that was an existing component, and we didn't want to reduce it that time. There was some sense there to that, and the reason being that the residential component provides for a potential workforce to live close to where they work. This is a pretty high trend going on nationwide these days, and this makes the area very attractive to national and international end-users, and it complements the overall land use plan. We consider the combination of classifications as presented is an overall team effort with cooperation of all those involved, and it presents a very attractive total package area with flexibility for an economic growth end-user. It fits well with the existing conditions out there with the racetrack and the airport. We are bounded centrally there by the land application, Henry County Water and Sewer, and the airport to the north and the racetrack to the north. Finally, please keep in mind, it's not a rezoning request. This is, we feel like this cooperative efforts truly exemplify what future land use planning is all about. I think we've involved just about everyone we can to move forward and try to get this in a package to possibly attract the end-user out there that could help the county as a whole. So that's, that's all I've got. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? This constitutes a public hearing, so I'm going to reset the clock for 15 minutes and invite anyone in opposition of this request is to come forward to the podium, state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Edward Tony, 894 Upper Woolsey Road, Hampton, Georgia. I have a problem with the high-density for that area there. It should remain as a, as a industrial-type area. We're trying to develop around the airport over there, and it's also in close proximity to the flight path for the jet aircraft that will be coming in there because they're going to move further out because they're faster vehicles, so they have to move further out. So I'm totally opposed to any high-density changes in that area. Number 5A, it looks like that might be suitable for 5A because it's already developed that area. But as far as the remainder, it's my opinion, and I, and I live in that area, and I don't feel like high-density is a match for that area, especially after our investment in the airport to see that, you know, our investment will pay off for us, and we don't need to be putting residential houses every, every block. So anyway, I appreciate it.
Anybody else like to be heard? If not, does applicant have any more comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only other comment I have is, is that in our discussions with Mr. Preston, the HDR, the high-density, was already on there. We just felt like we put it in a different place. I will say that we're not opposed to the high-density being a lower-density residential, but we feel like it is important that you have a residential component for, to make that attractive to a national or international end-user. They like to have, on these bigger developments, they like to have, and taking advantage of the airport, they like to have it where their workers can live close by, and that's a very, very big trend nationwide right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to yield the floor to District Two. I have concerns about that high-density residential, too. So if you could offer a compromise.
You might want to come back up, just because we might ask you a few more questions, just to try to work this out, because, I mean, that seems to be the consistent concern, and you guys have been very amenable to talking about going to a medium residential density. The question I have is just kind of looking at the map. I know in the past, y'all did have some high-density, and Mr. Tony brings up a point. I mean, you can see on the map, I mean, it, I don't know, you can see it over on the far left over there to where there's already some, you can see the plats, you know, all the, up right above, you know, 5A. But what's your thoughts on the 6 and 2A and 7? I will tell you, and I've shared with you, that this is a beautiful piece of industrial property. I mean, I could envision one day there being some manufacturing and some other things, the things we talk about from an economic development point that could be something that gets the governor down here, and we're all taking pictures in front of. I mean, I don't disagree with Mr. Tony that we try to minimize, because we, there will be plenty of housing choices for the workforce. I mean, I'll get on any, you know, medium that you need us to discuss, to talk about how much access there is to residential. I mean, are any of those other chunks, are you willing to consider something else? And I hate to put you on the spot.
Well, again, a lot of thought went into, primarily, the reason that we chose that is because you have a natural division of the Georgia Power easement, which is 150-foot Georgia Power easement that runs from basically east to west. You also have some other division factors as far as utilities and sewer and that were natural dividers there, that almost made it, I mean, you have so much industrial up at the top that, that it really didn't make any sense to go all industrial with that. What you want to achieve here is, if, we have people that look at Henry County all the time for bringing a business here, and they look for specific things. This property is unique in a way that we feel like this is the highest and best use. What you find is, is that people will search these land use maps, and if they don't see a certain component that is close by, you will never hear from them. I wouldn't, my opinion is, is this is not a rezoning.
Right.
Okay? You're not rezoning that high-density residential. It's just a, what we consider what would be the best use for that if this develops as a whole. It is a transition I can, I'm not stuck with a high-density at all. But if you butt that industrial right up to what's further south of us, you're butting industrial property right up next to rural agricultural. So we're offering a transition, basically the full width of our property, almost as a buffer. So, you know, you've seen traditional transitions before from commercial to, you know, high-density residential to lower-density residential to rural. I mean, it's just basically you're driving out of town. So that's primarily why we moved it from where it was before to where it is now, to provide that transition from industrial to the lower, below that rural agricultural or rural residential. There's probably a combination of both, a lot of probably larger acre tracts down there.
Yeah, but it's all the county lines.
Right. So what you have is, is you're creating a buffer, per se, from just jamming industrial right up against to a guy's got there and got 10 or 12 acres. So, but again, I'm not opposed to reducing it from high-density. Even I think you've gone from high-density, I think the next one is medium-high, and I think you suggested medium. That's, medium-density would be fine by us.
I would be amenable to vote for something for, if you change that high-density to medium. It'd be tough for me to go with medium-density, or I couldn't go with high.
And again, we chose that high-density only because it was already on the land use map.
I know.
I mean, as it exists now.
Just make it an opportunity to negotiate it out.
Yeah, so, but we're not opposed to the high-density going to a medium-density.
Yes, sir?
I'm looking at the future land use map. So now, are you proposing more? Because I can't, I can't delineate between what you're proposing as to what was on the future land use map if we should decide to take that off. This section right here, like that section, what, how much is that as compared to 7, 2A, and 6? Is that, I mean, how, what's the difference in the, in the amount? Because it's already there. The future land use map shows it in that section as high-density.
Right.
Right. So how much are you adding to that?
That's a good question. I don't know what the acreage was on the original high-density residential. What we did was, we said, okay, let's keep the residential component, whatever it may end up being, and let's shift it to where it makes the most sense.
We adopted that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And where it makes the most sense for us is to make it the transition from a truly industrial piece of property to the current areas.
And I can see where you would want, I mean, I can see where it makes sense with Georgia 20 and the other things coming in. I'm just trying to get my head around the fact that there was, seems like there's a fair amount there that, like you've already stated, that in 2009, we adopted that as high-density in that one section. So what I'm trying to say is, okay, what do we, you know, how much are we adding? I'd like to know what the difference is. I know that this area right over here to, I'm going to say to the west, on the future land use map, that yellow area, that's this area that's right here that's above 5A. So I know you're adding that. Looks like you're adding, I can't, I can't tell. I mean, it looks like you're adding 6 and 2A. I mean, it looks like you're increasing it substantially, and I don't know that I would be amenable to doing that either, to increasing it. I'd like to know. I wish we had a footprint there of what you were doing here, so that we could have a better idea and understanding. We've already, as a board, we adopted 2009, the high-density in that one location. So, I mean, you know, I wouldn't have an issue with having that, you know, with a, you know, making that a comparable amount of that. But I'm not, I wouldn't, don't think that I would be interested in increasing that amount of high-density. Does that make any sense?
Yeah. What if we considered it like this? If you do the math, if you, if we did, if we took the same amount of acreage of high-density that was there, and we put it somewhere in my proposed brown area? What if you did the equalization math of jumping down two categories from high-density to medium-density? What that would yield versus that same amount that would deal, that would be high-density? You're talking about math that these guys would have to do, and I don't want to put Jeremy on the spot, but we're not asking to, I'm saying that I don't have to have the high-density that I already have now. I'm willing to go to medium-density, but it does cover a little bit more acreage. So the net effect would probably be minimal.
Well, in looking at the future land use map in the green-hatched area, is that, I can't see it as good on this one, is that industrial, the green-hatched?
The green-hatched is actually rural residential.
Rural residential, okay. Because I can't see it on mine that well on either one, actually. Well, I can on this one, that might not see it now, pulling down. Okay. Well, that, well, and I understand what you're saying. You're really not trying to rezonate right now. You just want to try and get a, an overall picture where somebody looks at it, they could come in, but.
I want Henry County to get that.
We don't want them to come in and thinking, okay, we're going to build 19 million apartments right there, you know, at the end of the night.
Which I don't think medium-density allows, so.
I think I'm like that. Wayne, I hate to put you on the spot, but, you know, I just want to make sure I address the concerns of the other commissioners and stuff. What if, because 5A looks a little more dense than some of the others, so that could go to medium-density. And then, how about 6, 2A, and 7? If they go to that R1 or low-density residential, just because if you look at all the surrounding, it's all R.A., that might make, because I think Mr. Tony does have a valid concern that we, we're hoping eventually that airport draws some industrial development, and we all know from, from our neighbors to the north and so forth, is that as this area, we had a lot of residential, that's more people are going to complain about the industrial development, which we need for our tax digest. We need businesses, we need manufacturing, and we don't want to, you know, believe me, I understand a resident, once you move in, you don't, you might get annoyed by some of those nuisances that were already there, but you're annoyed because now you're in that area. I mean, is there a compromise? I'm just trying to, we're trying to limit, I don't think we want the exact sum, number of people, because we're worried about every residential person you put in that area might be a future person complaining to the board about the planes when we want the planes for the manufacturing and everything else.
What I would be more inclined to do is, is if this is what I want a future developer, a future end-user to see, I would rather them see something adjacent to them that they can make work with an overall development. So in all reality, this parcel is quite far off the road.
Okay.
Okay? So even though it sits right next to the current development, I don't have access through that development. So in all reality, that probably makes more sense as one of the rural residential parcels than what would be below, what I can connect roads to when, if it builds out. Okay? Now, I'm not saying that it has to have all of that. Maybe if we go 5 and 6, the rural residential, and let, yes, let 2A and 7 be the medium-density, then that may be something that would not only be more marketable, we want Henry County to win, too.
Yeah, I understand.
And if we start, if we start making this not look as attractive, then the person that would call will never know that he looked at it because he won't call.
So staff thoughts on making 5A and 6 low-density, and then making 2A and 7 medium-density? I mean, is that what you were saying, Wayne?
Yes. I think that would be a better mix.
Create a transition zone?
It would give a good transition, and it would, you know, currently, right now, it's all just residential agricultural, so, I mean, it would add some additional density over what the current zoning would allow, but it would be a good transition from the industrial into a, you know, a medium-density residential, then going into the rural residential of Spalding County.
Which I think that works better in the long run. Because now we, we don't have the high-density component that tends to, with that, I, and that I could support, I think.
Chairman, you have some thoughts?
I can go along with Commissioner Bowman's theory with this. So if you can put that in the motion, that.
May I ask one more thing? Can I be clear on what we agreed to?
Yeah.
Basically, tracks 2A and 7 would be medium-density.
Right.
Instead of high-density.
Right.
And track 6 and 5A. And track six and five A would be low-density.
Correct.
Residential.
Yes.
Everything else would stay the same.
Yes, right.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I'm, I'm, I'm aboard with that.
Okay. I, I make the motion to accept staff's recommendation on this, well, we need to do the, have we done, we've finished all the public hearing, correct?
We have.
Okay. Staff's recommendation with the following amendments, that the high-density residential be amended to where five A and six are represented by a low-density residential, and two A and seven are medium residential.
Have a motion?
Same.
Have second district four, any further discussion? On favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, a, uh, Constitution Public Hearing, TRZ fourteen dash zero seven, Papagayo Partners LLC, McDonald, request a rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to R2 Single Family Residential for property located on the south side of Rogers Road, west of Airline, in landlot one fifty-one of the seventh district, property consists of four point zero three five plus or minus acres, and requests as for a residential subdivision. Mr. Gilbert.
Good evening again, Chairman and Board members. The request before you is a rezoning from RA to R2 for property located on the south side of Rogers Road, west of Airline Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone four point oh three five plus or minus acres from RA to C2 for the purpose of a single-family residential minor subdivision. The proposed development is illustrated as four lots, each having a minimum lot size of thirty thousand square feet on septic with a net density of one. As you can see from the overhead, the actual minimum size that they're proposing is thirty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-four. Um, according to the conceptual site plan submitted, um, all of the lots meet the R2 development standards as outlined in section two point oh one oh two C of the Unified Land Development Code. The request to develop a single-family minor subdivision is consistent with the future land-use map, which designates the subject property for low-density residential at up to two dwelling units to the acre. Based upon the conceptual site plan, the applicant is below the maximum net density allowed by that low-density residential designation. The zoning advisory board heard this request on September eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, and recommended approval with the following six conditions. Each driveway shall be located such that the minimum intersection site distance is met per the posted speed limit of the road as determined by the Henry County Department of Transportation. Should any driveway require a driveway pipe, the pipe shall be required to have safety flare-in sections on each end of the pipe. Three, a vinyl plaid is required for minor subdivisions as outlined in section four point oh four oh two B three of the ULDC, and must meet the requirements of twelve point oh two oh three C of the ULDC. Condition four, notwithstanding anything to the contrary herein, no zoning condition imposed shall be interpreted or implied in a manner so to require any violation of an existing building, development, stormwater, or any other applicable codes. Five, front elevations shall be craftsman-style consisting of brick, stone, cement, fiberboard, or some combination of these materials. The remaining three sides shall consist of brick. Vinyl-based products are only permitted in the eve, soffit, and fascia. And condition six, a minimum heated floor space of twenty-four hundred square feet, and the yards are to be constructed with sod to the drip line in order to preserve trees on the property. I'll answer any questions that the board has.
Anybody have any questions? If not, would applicant, please come forward, please, state your name and address for the record, and your case, please.
Good evening, Board. Uh, my name is Royce Grant, I'm here representing Papagayo Partners tonight, uh, for the rezoning from RA to R2, uh, for the four point zero three five acres on Rogers Road. Uh, currently, the property's owned RA, and it would yield, uh, three lots, uh, based on its current zoning right now. And in seeking for the R2, we're asking for a fourth lot. And in exchange for the fourth lot, we're, I'm amenable to all the conditions that, uh, the board previously, uh, recommended. I'm fine with all those conditions as well. Uh, but you know, I just want to point out that if, if it remained RA, you know, these can, these definitely conditions would not be in place. We wouldn't have the twenty-four hundred square foot heated space, and we wouldn't have the, uh, the quality of the, uh, the facade. And so I just, uh, we'd definitely appreciate your approval.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Take it. Okay. Uh, I'm gonna reset it for fifteen minutes, and, uh, I'll open the floor up for public hearing, people that oppose this rezoning. If you would, uh, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have fifteen minutes. Uh, see ya, nun. Uh, I thought we were gonna be here all night. Okay, would applicant please come forward again? Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? You have just, uh, said that you was amenable to the, the six, uh, conditions that was placed upon, so having said that, we have the resolution to approve a rezoning request by the, how do you pronounce that? Papagayo?
Papagayo.
Papagayo. Partners LLC, from RA Residential Agriculture to R2 Single Family Residential for property located in the south side of Rogers Road, west of Airline Road, in landlot one fifty-one of the seventh district, consisting of four point zero three five plus or minus acres.
Move to approve.
Have a motion from District Three to approve.
Aye.
Second from District One, any further discussion? On your favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have another rezoning request, RZ fourteen dash zero eight, HP Henry LLC of Stockbridge, request rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Single Family Residential for property located on the south and east side of Carl Parker Road, in landlot one thirty-five, one fifty-four of the sixth district, property consists of eighty-nine point nine eight acres, and requests as for residential subdivision. Chairman.
Good evening again, Chairman and Board members. The rezoning request that is before you is for property located on the south and east side of Carl Parker Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone eighty-five point nine eight plus or minus acres from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Single Family Residential for the purpose of a single-family residential subdivision. The proposed development consists of seventy-eight lots with a minimum lot size of thirty thousand square feet on septic, um, and that would yield a net density of one point oh one dwelling units per acre. The request to develop a single-family residential subdivision is consistent with the future land-use map, which designates the property for rural residential at up to one point oh dwelling units per acre. According to the Henry County Cities Joint Twenty Thirty Comprehensive Plan, Appendix C, Section Four, Page C seven, the zoning comparison table lists the following zoning districts as appropriate zoning districts within the rural residential land use category, RA, R1, R2, R3, R4, and R5. Based upon the conceptual site plan provided by the applicant, the net density of the proposed development would meet the maximum allowed net density for a rural residential land designation. The zoning advisory board heard this request on September the eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, and recommended denial. I'll answer any questions that the board has.
Anybody have any questions?
I'll save mine as well.
Okay, do we, uh, would the applicant please come forward, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, I'm Doug Dillard with Wiseman, Noack, Curran, Wilco, and we represent the applicant. Uh, let me state at the outset, we filed some constitutional notices yesterday, and we would like to be sure that that notice is, uh, accepted by the board and spread on minutes, uh, in the record this evening. Uh, as Jeremy stated.
When did you file that?
Yesterday.
Okay, does the clerk have, got you.
Got it, Patrick.
Counsel said we got it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and I apologize so late filing, Mr. Chairman, we've just been engaged, so, uh, but, uh, having said that, I think Jeremy has, uh, stated the case accurately. Only thing I would like to point out is that we are going from R1 to R2, uh, not from RA to R1, the package, uh, recommendation mentioned, that we're going from RA to R1, and we're going from R1 to R2. Um, also, the net difference between what is currently approved under R1 and what is, uh, requested by the applicant is approximately twenty units. And if you look at the, uh, if you look at the site plan and the, uh, map here, you'll note that property on Carl Parker Road remains R1, and that the R2 is then, um, contained within the subject site, and the transition from R1 to R2 is really absorbed by this property owner. Likewise, if you look to the south of the subject site, uh, you'll notice that we have non-residential, uh, um, properties zoned there, uh, which is adjacent to the proposed R2 and the existing R1. And then, within a thousand feet of this property, you've got property that's being developed as R3. So we feel like that this, uh, this application in accordance with staff's recommendation is consistent with the comprehensive plan, uh, it's consistent with the plan that we've, uh, that we have submitted. Uh, we've worked with the staff to work out some eleven conditions, those conditions are acceptable to us, and we would like for you to approve it in accordance with staff's recommendation. I would also point out, the staff's recommendation indicates that we satisfy all the criteria under your ordinance, uh, and with that, and with the consistency of the comp plan, and with the conditions that have been suggested by staff, uh, we ask that you favorably consider this and approve it. Uh, I would like to reserve my remaining time, Mr. Chairman, for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. Twelve fifteen remaining. Okay, would anybody like to be heard in favor of this, uh? Okay, I'm gonna open the floor up for fifteen minutes for people that oppose, uh, this proposed rezoning, and if you come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Frank Franzen, I live on Babbs Mill Road, Hampton, Georgia. I am opposed to this, uh, due to the fact that the infrastructure is so far behind in that area. If you go out Carl Parker Road before it reaches old highway three, if a school bus is coming, you have to stop and wait, cause you cannot pass each other. I don't know how you intend to pack these people in here and expect them to leave, go to and from work. Another thing is, if, if I bought a house in this area, in this, that small lot, if your septic system ever failed, you would have no place to put a new one. Are you guys gonna dig the roads up and put sewage in after the fact? I mean, you need to think about all these things. Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Esther Worthington, I live at one nine five Twin Oaks Drive, Hampton. Uh, we have had a Christmas tree farm down in that area for about forty years, and it has gone from what was totally rural to now being developed. The roadway, Carl Parker Road, is not adequate for the kind of traffic that is on it now. The north and east end of it has a speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour, is neither observed nor is it enforced. The south end of it has a speed limit of thirty miles per hour, and it, again, is neither enforced nor is it observed. As Pete just mentioned, school buses cannot pass on the south end of Carl Parker Road. On the north end of Carl Parker Road, you're feeding onto Babbs Mill Road on what is essentially a blind drive. We will have accidents at that accident, at that intersection if the traffic increases. And from there, going over to, uh, go on Jonesboro Road from Babbs Mill Road, uh, it's an impossible situation in the morning and in the afternoon. I don't believe that any trap, any development should be approved in that area until you have a comprehensive roadway study and traffic study of the area.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Carla LaQuire, one fifty Twin Oaks Drive, Hampton. Um, I was at the last meeting, um, I'm a little nervous, by the way. Um, nothing's changed from the last meeting. Um, they're, the same neighborhood, same problems, traffic, schools are being overcrowded, cost is being estimated two-plus million in schools that you're gonna have to add to, you've already said. There's gonna be devastation to the green space, devastation to the wilds, the wildlife, and, and you brought up in the last things about adding firehouses. And you've already said it's gonna be one point five million apiece. And so you're gonna have to add policemen, firemen, rescue squads, teachers, and the list goes on, and building new schools for this, cause they've already said there'll be hundred and ninety-five plus more kids. And the tax burden is gonna fall on all of us who are already burdened to the max. Our property values are going in the toilet, and this is built in our neighborhood, you know, our property is ten acres, mine is, our neighbors around us have four to six, some two to four. And, uh, I was, I moved there twenty-four years ago, and it was a dirt road. Now it's paved, we all petitioned to get it paved, and it's a nice, quiet, beautiful neighborhood. We all know each other, we all take care of each other. Everybody, this is one of the rarest neighborhoods around that we all know each other by name. You build these houses so close together in this little place, and, and it's, it's a big lot, it's a hundred acres, all those trees are gonna disappear, the wildlife has no place to go, they're gonna come out, there's turkey in there, deer, lots of deer. I, I just, you know, I just want you to think about, if this was in your neighborhood, would you want that there? Would you want that in your neighborhood, around your house, if you had this perfect little place? And some of us have lakes, and my husband used to work for Clayton County Water Authority a long time ago, he worked there thirty-five years, and he said that when you have a lake and you have a, a big neighborhood built like that, and you have the rainwater run off, he says you're gonna have to do something to, to your spillways and your pipes, and all that will have to all be fixed, everybody's lakes around there, cause it increases the water. He said, and, and then who's gonna pay for all of that? Cause all the homeowners really don't, they're not able to afford all that, you know, progressively through the years. You've already built everything, you've got it all, you know? So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Tabitha Varner, I live at one eighty Twin Oaks Drive. A part that Carla brought up I'd like to reiterate upon is, at the last meeting on September eleventh, it was stated that the school board presented to you that it would be two point four million dollars to increase the already full schools. Mount Carmel is full, Dutch Town is full, they're full, there's no room for these children. There's more subdivisions currently being built on Jonesboro Road, there's a subdivision about to be started on Chambers Road. You've got major traffic, we've got six more years for this plan for traffic on Jonesboro Road to be extended to a four-lane all the way out to nineteen forty-one. You're fixing to put a Costco in. Where is all this traffic gonna go? They're gonna cut through our roads, they're already cutting through. They're coming from J.C. Penney's and Coles, over to Jonesboro, to Target and Sam's, they're coming through our properties, they're coming through our roads where we walk with our children play, and yes, we, there's nine of us on Twin Oaks. We know the people on Conkle, on Conkle, on Bab Mill, Mount Carmel, that whole five-mile circle, we're a family. That's a lot of people, that's a lot of cars, that's a lot of kids. The more people you pack into a small area, the more traffic, the more accidents, the more crime. Babbs Mill to Jonesboro Road is extremely dangerous, you've had two major accidents recently, Nash Farm, understanding it was in the AJC that you refinanced the Nash Farm cause she couldn't afford the payments. Where are you gonna get the money? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jane Finney at two oh nine Carl Parker Road. Uh, the houses that were built behind me... The houses that were built behind me, Clayton side was three-quarter, three-quarter acre lots, Henry County had to be one acre lots, so these houses, if they're approved, should be one acre lots. And what's gonna happen with that, we said around our street, is that twenty acres or that acreage not going to be developed? What's gonna be put in there later on? Is it just gonna be woods growing, or are they gonna put some kind of agricultural thing in there? Not agricultural, um, commercial? That's all.
My name is Seiya Taft, I live in three forty Conkle Road. I own the property on, on this area, and I have a five-acre lake in here, and the stream comes in this area, and all this is wetland. How are you going to contain the water? When you build so much, where the water going to go? That lake been in my family and Mister Conkle Road over a hundred years, and we just going ruin their habitat, and also, we got a mega church in Mount Carmel Road, we got an elementary school, and already these roads are congested, and building seventy-eight more houses, it gonna be more traffic to handle. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Doug Johnson, I live at six fifty-two Babbs Mill Road. I was here at the last hearing they had for this zoning, and it got turned down because we came and, and fought against it, and I don't understand why we're coming back basically fighting the same thing once a month, we don't get paid to come here, and we shouldn't have to come fight the same thing every month. If they don't wanna go by what it's already zoned for, then, you know, we, we really got a problem, because what's gonna happen, and this ain't being mentioned in none of it, across the road at Quail Ridge, they tried to get R two, and they couldn't get it, so they did a R one and they built on every other lot. If this goes through, we're not just looking at that a hundred acres that they're calling eighty, we're looking at Quail Ridge is gonna fill in the rest of it, and we're gonna be seeing about sixty more houses on that side of the road, and it's still, nothing here is gonna change the fact that they're gonna pollute the underground water, and I got a well downhill from this hundred acres, and I really wouldn't, don't think that I ought to have to worry about that, if R one would keep it safe and R two's gonna pollute it, let's stay with the R one. And that, but to come back and fight the same thing repeatedly, we should start getting paid. Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard?
He, he mentioned Quail Ridge.
Been heard the first time, before you let somebody, has anybody been heard, that wants to be heard against this the first time? Okay. Well, we got a guy standing up behind you.
I mean, Quail Ridge's turned out to be a part of this subdivision. This is one of the houses in Quail Ridge, this is another one of the houses, as you notice, there's plenty of room around the house, and here's another house in Quail Ridge, and I'm sure they wouldn't appreciate being, having two houses per acre in their subdivision Thank you.
My name is Kerry Hall, I live at three thirty-two Conkle Road. All this right here is on top of a hill. All this right here is natural springs, I remember this ever since I was six years old, I've lived on the road fifty-one years. So, everything from the top of this hill up here is gonna run down to here and then run down to the creek, but everything's gotta come through Mister Taft's Lake before it reaches the creek. So, how are they gonna keep the mud, the garbage, all the runoff off the roads? This right here is about a hundred and fifty-foot hill up that they're not telling you about, and this all runs through a valley that's got ten-foot gullies all through this, because I remember walking it as a kid with all the underground springs. I know this land like the back of my hand. So, everything's gonna run off, right through what he said, this green space, it's gonna come right off, right down here to the bottom of Walnut Creek, and we have one of the cleanest creeks. Our creek starts a half a mile up on the power line with a natural spring, and it runs all natural, and you're gonna pollute it with eighty-four houses of septic tanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard, opposed?
Okay, my name's Kimberly Miller, and I live at one twenty-five Twin Oaks Drive, and I would just like for y'all to really take this in consideration and not approve it to R two if it has to be developed, I think R one, you know, and, and just keep the homes in the area the same as it is, just to make it look good and keep the property value up, and, and have some green space, and taking consideration habitat and wildlife as well. Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard, oppose it? Okay, uh, would the applicant, please return, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, when you suggest change in an established neighborhood, you always have some resistance to that, and I certainly appreciate the concern the area neighbors have here, the folks that are gonna be developing this, this subdivision are high-quality, qualified developers, and what they're gonna be building is gonna be comparable to what's already existing in the neighborhood, and they look forward to being a part of, of this community that has been so successful and people are so interested in preserving. I would point out, first of all, that, that relative to the transition, as I pointed out earlier, the property along Carl Parker is gonna be left as single-family detached under the R one category here, and those, those, those driveways will access on to and from Carl Parker. Internal, we are looking at seventy-eight units on almost eighty-six acres of land, so the overall density is one point oh one, which is consistent really with the R one category also. Relative to, to the transportation situation, I wanna, I wanna read to you a case, and I know y'all are not lawyers, but I wanna point out to you a case that came out of DeKalb County in their, in the nineteen seventies, and it dealt with traffic and denial by the DeKalb County Board of Commissioners of a zoning based on traffic, and the court held, the court correctly noted that the county has the power to control traffic as it thinks necessary, and that Flynn, as the owner of the tavern property as well as the subject property, could perhaps provide the subject property with access from Memorial Drive across the tavern's land, thus diminishing the use of Hambrik, and that's Hambrik Road, if you're familiar with Memorial Drive and Hambrik Road. But this is the important holding of the case, we add that the county has the duty and obligation to work with property owners to allow them the highest and best use of their property by considering on its own motion ways in which the county's objections to a proposed development could be eased by county action. Contrary to DeKalb County's position throughout this litigation, the burden is not on the applicant for rezoning to anticipate and counter every conceivable objection which the county might raise. Now, I know this application, through your process, has gone through all your departments, okay? The conditions that Jeremy and his staff have recommended are the result of the study and the, and the recommendations that have been made by, by your various departments from water, sewer, transportation, police, fire, and the like, and those eleven conditions are okay with us, and one of the things that those eleven conditions say is that there'll be no clear-cutting. When we look at this piece of property, we've got a thirty thousand square foot lot, we've got a buildable area, we've got a, we've got a clear in that buildable area, but the rest of it, we can't, we can't just go in there and arbitrarily clear-cut. So, we are, we're very sensitive to what the concerns of the neighborhood is, and we have agreed to these eleven conditions. The schools, when you look at what we're asking for, we're asking for only twenty additional units. Now, likewise with transportation, we can't control what school, school board is charged with. They are charged with, with providing the adequate rooms and facilities for the education of our children. They also get a pretty good chunk of the tax dollar. We're gonna create between twenty and thirty million dollars of additional value to this real estate, and it will be taxed at forty percent based on whatever your, your mill rate is, and the school board's gonna get a good chunk of that. And I submit to you that the money that we're gonna create as a result of this development for school alone is gonna be more than is needed to satisfy the addition of just forty students. The idea that it was two point four million dollars from the, from the planning commission really had no basis, that was the statement that was made, and they claimed that they needed eight additional classrooms at the, at the school. Well, that might be true as relates to the development of the whole area, but that would include the seventy units or the sixty-eight units that we could otherwise do on this property today without this rezoning. So, you can't hold this property owner, I submit, hostage because of increased traffic or because of the increase in school, in the school demand, because that's the burden that the local government has and has responsibility to all the citizens of Henry County to provide a solution to. You have established certain criteria under your zoning ordinance that must be followed. We have satisfied each and every one of those, of those criteria, and I submit to you that the recommendation of the staff has adequately covered that, and I'm not gonna go through the repetition of doing, of doing that other than to say, I know that it is in the record, there's no evidence before you tonight that would justify a denial of this application. As a matter of fact, the planning commission gave you no direction relative to their denial, they didn't find any fact, they didn't reach any conclusions, they just made a motion to deny. There was discussion about traffic, there was discussion about, about the school system, but as, as a matter of fact, there was no real substantive evidence presented to the planning commission that would justify their recommendation of denial, the only professional, professions that were in the room were recommending approval, and likewise tonight, and I submit and understand the concern that the neighborhood has, but there's been no substantive evidence presented to you tonight that would justify a denial of this application. The only evidence that's credible for you to consider tonight, other than political considerations, is the evidence that's created by staff, a well-thought-out design and site plan, and the agreement of the property owner to, to agree to the eleven conditions as suggested. We have addressed the public issues, we have a right to use this property to a reasonable economic use, your comprehensive plan calls for, this is a consistent recommended classification within your comp plan, and we submit to you that it should be approved as suggested by staff, and we have the client here available to answer any questions, and I would likewise be available to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm gonna consider the property hearing is concluded, and now if, I'm gonna yield. Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead. Ask it to him or the applicant?
I'm gonna ask Jeremy.
Okay.
Jeremy, uh, so it's, it's R one as we speak?
That is correct, the property is currently zoned R one with no zone, there was no zoning conditions placed on the property when it was rezoned to R one.
Okay, under R one, how many lot, I mean, what's the difference in the amount of lots under R one as, as opposed to what the applicant's asking for?
According to what the applicant is saying, it would be approximately twenty units less, they're showing seventy-eight, they say it would go to fifty-eight, based on the R one. The difference between the R one current zoning versus the R two zoning, the R one zoning has a minimum lot size of forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet versus the thirty thousand square feet that R two has. The minimum heated floor space in R one is fifteen hundred square feet, the minimum heated floor space in R two is sixteen hundred square feet. R one has a hundred and fifty-foot lot width, and the R two has a hundred and forty-foot lot width. So, if you look at it just as a net density, then it would net the same thing, the one point oh is what would be allowed, but based on what the applicant is saying, when they went back and redrew the lines of where the property lines would go, they're claiming to lose twenty lots.
So, so we're talking about twenty lots on a, tell me one more time, seventy-eight?
It's eighty-five point nine eight plus or minus acres, they're showing, they're requesting at seventy-eight lots, and they would go to approximately fifty-eight lots.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
This is, um, I, I first want to give a compliment to the applicant, I was able to have a meeting with him last Friday, I can, I can tell you that I don't think their intention is to hurt the area, because they even talked about the styles that they were talking about, and I actually left that meeting feeling pretty good about things, but I had an engineer bring something to my attention, and I'd like you to put up the future land use map up on the screen, if you don't mind. And, you know, in the past, this future land use map is very important to the county, this kinda shows what we want, what we're putting out there to the public of how land will be used in the future, and this is to be a guideline for our staff as well as to the public on where things are, and you'll notice, everything's green, green represents rural, residential. You'll notice, we do have a little bit of yellow over there, and here's the thing, I wanted, but you can see that there's no yellow touching anything around the, the green property that's, that's got lines crossing it. And I want, I had, asked staff, I said, give me the definitions, I need to see the future land use map and the definitions that we put with each one of these, because I'm trying to make sure, because, you know, you hear about, people talk about us in the past, and they say we need to make sure we're following our plan. So, if you read the definition for rural residential, it says the predominant form of development includes farms, pastures, and forestry practices on large tracts of land. Single-family residence is associated with agricultural activities in large lot residential subdivision areas where public services are not anticipated in the near future. It goes on, and it, it even gives you what should be in rural residential, and it says RA and then R one. If you go down to the next classification, which is yellow, which is low-density residential, it says this category is intended for typical residential subdivision developments in the R one and R two zoning districts. So, I have no doubt that the applicant is well-intentioned, but I gotta tell you, the precedent that this would set, by turning that green that's right in the middle of every, a lot of large tracts of land, would immediately turn yellow for the future, and I'm not, I just, it troubles me to set a precedent that could domino-effect the entire area and break away from the entire anticipated of what the intent was for that area, and that's, that's something we've had to be very careful as commissioners to make sure that, because, I mean, some of the things that the applicant told me, I really liked the, I mean, they're talking about craftsman style, they were talking about three-car garages, I mean, and twenty-four hundred square feet and greater, but it's still, at the end of the day, no matter how polite and how good I thought things sounded, I'm not gonna be responsible for going against what our desire and what our future goal was for this. So, with that, I am going to uphold the zoning advisory board's findings and recommend denial of this application. That's my motion.
We have a motion to adopt a resolution denying a rezoning request by HP Henry LLC from R one, single-family residential to R two, single-family residential for a property located in from R1 single-family residential to R2 single-family residential for a property located in the east and south side of Carl Parker Road in land lot 1351546, district consisting of 8.98 plus or minus acres. Is that your motion?
Yes.
We have a motion, District 2, second District 4. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you so much. Let's move down to the County Manager, a resolution to amend the agreement for the management of Cotton Fields Golf Course approved by the Board of Commissioners through Resolution 11-283 on December 20, 2011 presented by Mr. Jim Walker, County Manager, and Rod Gray, Purchasing Director. Good evening.
Evening, Commissioners. The agreement for the management of the Cotton Fields Golf Course was approved by the Board of Commissioners in December 20 of 2011, and it will be up for renewal on December 31 of 2014. Schwinniger Management was contracted to provide the referenced services and is in mutual agreement with the county to amend and extend the original agreement as referenced in their proposed attached amendment. The material amendments are to extend the existing agreement to a seven-year initial term with three one-year renewals, for a monthly lease payment increased from $2,000 to $2,600 a month, that the vendor, Schwinniger Management, will repair the greens on the golf course, the bunkers, and the irrigation system, and that the county will make repairs and renovations to the ponds, the pro shop building, the pavilion, and the cart barn, and that Schwinniger Management will offer new promotional opportunities for play for Henry County residents. And we recommend you approve the amendment to the golf course management agreement, which was approved through Resolution Number 911-283 on December 20, 2011.
Anybody have any questions or comment? If not, yeah, there's a resolution in the book for the amendment of an agreement for the management of the Cotton Field Golf Course approved by the Board of Commissioners through Resolution 11-283 on December 20, 2011.
So moved.
Have a motion from District 4. District, District, second from District 1. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. County Attorney, a resolution approving in part and denying in part an appeal by Robert F. Bullard and Bullard Land Planning from a decision by the Henry County Department of Stormwater Management. Mr. Jock Statter, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. As you will recall, last meeting, you conducted a public hearing on an appeal by Mr. Ballard, Mr. Bullard, I'm sorry, and his company regarding the stormwater, the stormwater department's refusal to approve plans, stormwater plans prepared by him because he's a landscape architect, not a professional engineer. The hearing was concluded, and tonight it's to you to vote to conclude the matter. You have before you a resolution which would approve the plan as submitted by Mr. Bullard and deny the other requests he made. He made a request that we amend the ordinance and also that they receive some payment for some attorney fees and cost incurred. I would recommend that you approve the ordinance as it's written, or the resolution as it's written, and conclude this.
Any questions? We've got a resolution approving in parts and denying in parts an appeal by Robert F. Bullard and Bullard Land Planning from a decision by the Henry County Department of Stormwater Management.
So moved.
Have a motion, District 4.
Second.
Second from, I didn't get that. Who is, second from District 5. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. You have the next one, too. Resolution approving amended and restated airport ground lease agreement for lots 26 between Wells Fargo National Association for Space at the Henry County Airport, AKA, I'm not even going to say that, in Henry County, Georgia. Go.
Mr. Chairman, actually, the next two items, B and C, are really the same thing. On September 2nd, the Board of Commissioners approved amended and restated ground leases on these parcels because the previous owner had gone into foreclosure and there was a receiver appointed to operate these properties. SunTrust, I'm sorry, Wells Fargo Bank has now foreclosed on these properties. So, what we're doing is the exact same amended and restated lease, just to clean it up for Wells Fargo so they can market the property and get somebody in that'll make productive use. I'd recommend you approve both Exhibit Number 31 and Exhibit Number 32. And these are the exact same, Mr. Chairman, these are the exact same things that were approved on September 2nd, except the names have changed.
Okay. Just for clarification, let's do them one at a time. We have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving an amended and restated airport ground lease agreement for lots 26 between Wells Fargo Bank, National Association of Space at the Henry County Airport. Does somebody move that in record?
So moved. So moved.
Have a motion from District 5, second District 4. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Next, we have a resolution that states that the Resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving an amendment and restating airport ground lease agreements for lots 22-25 between Wells Fargo Bank, National Association for Space at the Henry County Airport. Have a motion, District 5, second District 4. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Last but not least, resolution approving the issuance of revenue anticipated certificates by the Hospital Authority of Henry County for the benefit of Piedmont Healthcare Incorporated.
Mr. Chairman, I've asked Rod Meadows from Hospital Authority to come present this to you. He knows much more about it than I do and can answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you putting me last on the agenda. I assume it was because you thought I was getting paid by the hour for this. The fact is...
Not the last one, just one more. No, the fact is, is to get up front like this, you have to be up front, and you waited to the last moment. And, but anyway, it's always good to see you.
I appreciate it.
And it is good news on what you're going to bring us, so that makes it work.
This is really good news, really good news for the County Commission and for the county, and our Chair, Joyce Rogers, is back here to explain all the details of the bond issue. But generally, what is happening, and a lot of this, we owe credit to former Commissioner, now your Finance Director, Fred Alletta, because at the time that Henry Medical Center and the Authority negotiated the deal for Piedmont to assume responsibility for the operation of Henry Medical Center, there were two primary criteria. One was is that they assume all of the cost of indigent care, and that occurred, of course, two years ago, and as a result of that, there is no longer one mill attributable to indigent care cost on our tax bills. Secondly, there was a negotiation that as soon as possible that Piedmont would refinance the existing bonds on which the county was a guarantor. And although those bonds technically don't come ripe for refunding for another two years, market conditions are sufficiently good that they can go ahead and do that now, and they've asked the Hospital Authority to issue new bonds not to exceed $61 million, the majority of which, about $57 million of which, would be to refund the existing bonds, and then about $4 million are going to be used to reimburse them for improvements that they've already made at the hospital. So, the Authority conducted a TEFRA hearing, as they're required to do under the law, on September 25th. We went through a bond validation, and a week ago, Judge McGarrett signed an order saying that this bond issue is appropriate, that there's public policy that is for the benefit of the county in us doing so, and tonight, finally, we come to you requesting your resolution that approves this transaction. Significant to the county is Section 2 on the second page of that resolution, which provides that the bonds are payable solely from the revenues derived from Piedmont and that there are no rights against the county or any political subdivision for repayment of these bonds. So, we respectfully request that you adopt this resolution on behalf of the Hospital Authority.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that you... Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
I want to have a question. Did anybody come in? Two weeks ago, I had to rush my wife to emergency room at Henry General. And all of the years that I've lived here, it was the best experience that I've had, and I want to commend Henry General, Piedmont Henry, in the way everything was handled. It was, they, it was awesome compared to what it's been in the past. It was great. It was awesome, and I appreciate it. That was my comment, Mr. Chair. It went great.
Joyce is responsible for that.
I know Joyce is, and I'm looking at Joyce and nodding my head up and down so that she knows I'm aiming that at her, but if you'll see that gets to the proper people, I really do appreciate it. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comment? If not, we have a resolution, the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Georgia, approving the issuance of revenue anticipation certificates by the Hospital Authority of Henry County for the benefit of Piedmont Healthcare Incorporated.
Move to approve.
Have a motion from District 2, second District 1. Any further discussion? All indicate with raising of your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you. May I be excused?
Last but not least, technology service, the Coats Fiber Optic. Good evening.
Good afternoon, Chairman. Evening, Board members. What we have here is, consists of three items. Court fiber, the pulling of this fiber connection will tie together all 17 locations between the admin building and all the courts buildings. The second part of this is the 911 fiber connection, which would make a redundant ring in case this building went out, 911 would still be connected to our servers, and then the upgrade of some network equipment inside of our server system to take care of it. We will show a savings of almost $1,000 a month, which we're paying charter right now for a 100 meg connection. It will greatly increase our speed, our network speed. And one other thing, the sheriff in his seized drug funds will fund the fiber connection of $48,000. 911 will fund the redundant ring of $27,000, and we will fund the $44,000 for the network upgrades. So, I want to thank the sheriff for making that sacrifice for us. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? If not, we have a resolution to approve the court and the 911 fiber project. As stated, we have a motion, District 3.
Seven.
Have a second, District 2. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next, we have the Chairman and Commissioners' comments. The only comment the Chair would make is, as you well know, we had 33, 34 items tonight. We went through them relatively quick, and I just want to commend staff for their due diligence. Number one is putting this package together, and number two is staying the drill, and number three is at 930. And I just want to publicly thank staff for a job well done. Having said that, I would, for any Commissioners, like to make a comment. If not, does somebody move that we asked the County Manager for comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have one quick comment. We had a citizen speak earlier this evening, Mr. Tony, and I want to go ahead and correct the record here. He, during his comments, said that I was the president of a company called Azure Investments. I'm not the president, I'm a partner. It's a company that was formed in 2012 for the purpose of buying real estate and acquiring land. It in no way conflicts with my job as the County Manager here in Henry County. Also, during Mr. Tony's comments, he made an inference that because I had an investment company and that Mr. Preston was an investment advisor, that he and I had somehow had a relationship prior to my being here in Henry County. That would be the equivalent of saying that I like football, and Peyton Manning is a quarterback, so he and I have dinner on Sunday evenings. That's how ridiculous and far-fetched those comments were. I want to say that I don't appreciate any attack on any of my Commissioners, but particularly Mr. Preston. I had never met Mr. Preston prior to showing up in Henry County for my job interview. I have no business interest with Mr. Preston. I've never had any business interest with Mr. Preston or with any of our Commissioners. And I resent that Mr. Tony would come here and try to draw some sort of a connection. I think it was irresponsible and improper for him to do so, and I think he owes Mr. Preston an apology. I would also like to say that I don't appreciate that Mr. Tony comes in here and he shakes his fingers at our Commissioners about not returning his calls. And I would like for our citizens to know that Mr. Tony routinely is a drain on the staff. He has requested thousands of emails through open records, hundreds of text messages, for the sole purpose of doing nothing but trying to discredit individuals. It has nothing to do with good government. He's afforded the right to come here before the county and speak, but I would ask that, should he do so in the future, that he in some way actually promote good government or bring something to the table other than unbased personal attacks against other people, particularly the leadership or the county. I wish that he were here so that I could say shame on you, Mr. Tony, and please bring ideas that forward, bring the county forward and stop with these petty personal attacks that do absolutely nothing but diminish you personally and hurt the county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. County Attorney.
I have nothing.
Upcoming meetings, Tuesday, November 4th, which is Election Day, at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, November 18th, 6:30 p.m., a regular board meeting. Does somebody move, we adjourn?
So moved.
Have a motion, District 3.
Second.
Second, District 4. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Good night.